Let me just.
Now I bet Manny so so.
Okay, got it. Good evening. Uh, welcome to the Village of Maricopa Trustees Work Session uh for February thirteenth twenty twenty three. There's an emergency exit on my right, there's an emergency exit on my left, uh please mute your phone. Uh, if you have one tonight. And uh, if there's an emergency there or enough uh emergency service personnel will help us all out. What I'm gonna do tonight, because we have two groups of people uh who have an interest in matters uh before the Board of Trustees in the work session, so usually. We usually uh handle them first, so people can go home and visit with their families. Uh, so the first item we're gonna handle is opening meeting.
There you go.
Uh, may have a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor.
Alright.
Okay, and besides that, the first item we're gonna go is to two A of new business. It's the fire department presentation uh they want to replace engine thirty one. Uh, and tonight doing a presentation is Fire Chief James Barney, Mr. Barney, please. The podium is all yours. Uh, before Mr. Barney gets started, I just been pointed out that we have all volunteer fire department in the community. We have five different companies, uh four engine companies and one ladder company and on a kind of a. A cyclical basis based upon uh years and amount of time that a truck has been in service. We replace trucks uh because you're only allowed to use a fire truck uh for a certain number of years. Uh, things get worn out, things get replaced, so tonight the fire department is gonna tell us about the next truck that was scheduled to get. Because we have a rotation, we wanna keep the uh equipment in fairly good condition and uh we wanna keep our all volunteers safe. James, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and board for allowing us to come to you with this proposal. The Village of Maricopa Fire Department um is looking to replace engine forty one, which is Columbia Engine and Host Company number two's. First uh first two pieces of equipment. Um, we have an extensive number of years of experience um that is. Uh, building our our actual committee up that reviewed all the specs and all the possibilities that we could go with. Um, I believe it was over, I wanna say two hundred and twenty-five years of service that we put everyone on the on the committee together, their years of experience. Uh, a quick background on the uh fire department itself. Um, we're made up of five different fire companies and we occupy four different firehouses in the village. We have two primary water supply pumpers, two rescue pumpers, two ladder trucks and one reserve pump. Rick, the the engine that we're looking to replace is one of our rescue pumpers. Um, in the fire department, we currently have a hundred and ninety-five members. Ninety-nine of those members are interior certified and active. We have fifty-four qualified apparatus operators. In the year twenty twenty-two, we went on eight hundred and twenty-two alarms. Fifty-seven of those were rescue or jaws of life alarms. Forty-one of those were confirmed actual fires. Just to give you a little basis of what surrounds our village, the town of Maricopa is comprised of fourteen career staff. And forty-nine active interior volunteers. The Harrison Fire Department has sixteen career staff and forty active interior volunteers. Both of those communities went on uh three quarters of the alarms that we went on in twenty twenty-two. We put twenty, we put three thousand one hundred and eighty hours of training in in the year twenty twenty-two. As a volunteer. Uh, most recently, on January thirty-first, our our volunteers responded to an active fire at six forty Maricopa Avenue. It was at one thirty AM and a three-story commercial storefront, eight apartments located above it. We evacuated approximately twenty-five residents without incident. While the fire was extinguished by other members. Um, in the slides, if you go to slide four, there's a few photos like that and then the uh the next incident. Um, more recent department activity that we've had. On February tenth, just on Friday, we responded to an active truck fire on Interstate ninety-five. This was during rush hour at nine AM, so you can imagine the traffic backup that was caused by the act by the uh accident and the fire. It was also extinguished by our volunteer membership without any other incident, and we were able to open up the roadway with the state police as quickly as possible. The Village of Maricopa Fire Department is responsible for three point eight miles of interstate in New York State. So on the next slide, we're gonna go to the need for replacement. The exceed, our engine forty-one's current lifespan has been exceeded. As a frontline apparatus, the National Fire Protection Agency recommends twenty years as a frontline piece of equipment. After that, it can become a reserve, a reserved piece of equipment. Engine forty-one is currently twenty-six years old today. So the projected arrival of a new apparatus would put that apparatus at thirty years going into being a spare piece of. It has fifty-seven hundred sixty engine hours on it, which converts to the equivalent of three hundred and forty-five thousand miles. Um, that is a, that is a formula that they derive because. Quite often, this these pieces of equipment are just sitting, running out in the middle of the road. So the equivalent of, you know, the forty thousand driven miles on it mean almost nothing to the to the uh wear and tear on the wheel. Engine forty-one alone responded to six hundred and fifty-eight alarms of the two thousand twenty-two. In two thousand eleven, Chief Dean Delita put together a projected replacement schedule. That was to replace all the all the apparatus uh every five years, one piece, one piece every five years. Uh, he started the, he started the moosh, the motion of that in twenty-ten with the purchase of our tower ladder, tower ladder. Now, unfortunately, due to the way things are being built, that progress has slowed a little bit. Um, and if you go to the next slide, you will see where we currently are with the replacement um, the replacement schedule of vehicles. One more, one more back, please. With the with the proposed replacement of engine forty-one, that arrival will take place in twenty twenty-four. Approximately thirty years after the initial purchase of engine forty-one. We have two more pieces of equipment that would need to potentially be replaced over the course of the next five and then ten years also. Um, but again, by following this schedule, it's going to best suit the village so that these pieces of equipment are not deteriorating at the same time. The current engine forty-one is a nineteen ninety-seven Marty Murray Fire Rescue Pumper. It's a Spartan Gladiator eight-person full-tilt, full-tilt cab with an Allison transmission, fifteen hundred gallon per minute pump and a five hundred gallon water supply. It has an onboard generator, onboard sea lighting, the cab is comprised of aluminum. And it it houses purse rescue extrication equipment, also known as the jaws of life. This vehicle is designed for initial fire tech, water supply and rescue operations.
So James, just an interruption, one quick question, so this responds in in forty-one, because as jaws of life respond to the highways all the time?
Highway, any any motor vehicle accident, any uh throughway call, any type of rescue uh and. Elevator rescues or stuck elevators, anything that has the word rescue or entrapment, that that is one of the two apparatus that goes to it.
May I ask, the jaws of life come with it, that's like a piece of the equipment?
The jaws of life are a essential tool, um they.
Included in the cost is what I'm asking.
They're included in the cost of this of this proposal uh because the set that we have is over fifteen years old. And it's no longer going to be serviced, so the new set is now part of the proposal because it has to be phased in as the other is phased out.
And I'm sorry, moment, that's a session of bad questions, um and you said this is the only um truck that is like this, uh you said, or two?
We have two.
Okay.
Yes. The proposed replacement engine forty-one. Would be a twenty twenty-five Seagrave Marader full-tilt cab. Eight-person cab. Okay, could you go to the next? Um, it has a Cummins motor, five hundred and twenty-five horsepower, fifteen hundred gallon per minute tank uh pump. And we are looking to increase the initial water on the tank that we store on the apparatus to seven hundred and fifty. It will provide more safety for our initial attack operations because we'll have more water for the firefighters while the operator outside is hooking to a fire hydrant. It it would come equipped with an onboard generator and extrication flat power plant to power the jaws of life. And on scene lighting, and it is going to be a all stainless steel cab and body, which um Seagrave prides itself, it is the strongest and safest in the industry. Again, it will be a design for initial tack, water supply and rescue operations. And then the next couple of slides are a few um, a few photos of basically what the apparatus will look like. Um, color aside, what the shape, size and dimensions of the apparatus are identical.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. I think you have um additional two hundred and fifty gallons, so does that make the truck bigger, is it the same size?
Um, it it does not make the truck bigger, it just raises the. Type of the initial hose bed um up approximately seven inches, um which. Is still lower than our existing hose bed on our current, so it's a. Problem for some people, but it's actually an improvement for us, even though we added the extra one.
It's a three tons of work. Okay, you go to quick, pretty quick, I mean.
Yeah, very quick. Um, so there's a, there is a uh schematic CAD uh computer aided drawing. Um, that is exactly what the apparatus will look like. Um, that's the preliminary drawings that the company gives us. The next slide is standard equipment that must be sold with the apparatus, there's no way to get it without that stuff on it. It's the NFPA standard and that's the way it goes.
Just quickly explain NFPA standard.
So National Fire Protection Agency is basically law without being law. Um, you, if you don't follow it and something goes wrong, reliable, it's 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 an accepted standard within the nation.
So ladders, the hooks.
The ladders, they're specific ladders with weight ratings and extension uh distances and the hooks have to be. For a certain weight load also, and we have to have that stuff, so that's why they make it where it's part of the proposal that comes with the apparatus.
Quick question, chief, uh the 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 existing one, the one we're taking out of service, has this stuff on it, uh is there any way we can use that stuff?
So we can, um but the that apparatus is going, is scheduled to become our spare apparatus. So we, rather than take old equipment off something, put it on something new and transfer it every month as we're servicing vehicles or something's out of service. Um, it's better to replace the equipment um within the period of time because those ladders that are on our apparatus were bought twenty-six years ago. So they have, they have seen their wear and tear and there there's really no purpose on putting it on something for another twenty years.
Oh, this one, oh, sorry, thanks, if you um have to. If the jaws of life for the existing equipment is not gonna be maintained, do you need another jaws of life for this older machine?
We have, so we have, we currently, we've been operating on two types of systems. We have a battery operated system and we have a hydraulic pressure operated system. Battery operated system is working, um but there it has its limitations and um it is not one hundred percent. You know, you can't use it in water, you can't use it in floodwater, you can't, once you use it, the warranties void, even if if it even works.
Hmm.
Um, so if we were to not replace the hydraulic system, we would be tying our hands.
No, I mean on the old truck.
Right, so so that it's being phased out, but we are not without tools currently. If it if it was to be phased out prior to the replacement, we would not be without.
Tools, and you wouldn't have to replace it i- if it's your backup equipment, I guess that's.
Yeah, it's it's not backup, it's frontline, but it isn't the first thing that would come off of the engine at a core.
So i- i- and forgive me, and so if you need two jaws of life, there's a lot of stuff going on, you you have them.
We have, we currently, yes, we have a set, the other rescue apparatus has a set as well, and we have more than one piece of everything.
And forgive my ignorance on this, chief, uh but is a jaws of life something you can throw in the trunk of a car or or a different, uh but it's gotta be attached to the to the engine or what?
The hydraulic system needs to be attached to the to the.
I thought, I just want.
Batteries can be taken anywhere, but you're at the mercy of the bat.
Got it, got it.
Um, the the next slide is uh a list of the hose that would need to be um added to the purchase. Um, it's just standard supply hose, five-inch supply hose and attack lines. Um, it's it's a relatively uh standard, standard list of hose with it with the pricing, the current pricing, that's and those are today's prices. The next slide is just a replacement schedule of of where we started with this process. Um, we we've met, it's it's been a long road putting this together. Um. Last year in February, the board uh provided us the the means to go forward and start to build. Um, so it's, it it took a long time to get the deal, to get the words and the the drawings together from Seagrave as they're so busy. Because no one's built anything for two years, so everybody's playing catch up there. Um, so, you know, with one, buying one piece of equipment, you're not necessarily a priority when New York City's purchasing twenty and every piece of equipment at a time. Um, the projected delivery for the apparatus, if we were to sign this month, would be June of twenty twenty-five. The proposal states a minimum of eight hundred days.
A minimum.
Uh, the next slide is just um the the cost of the radio equipment that would have to be purchased uh for the apparatus again. With the existing piece of equipment, it would not be getting surplus, it would be being used, so we can't get rid of those radios. The final slide um is just a breakdown of the cost of the the purchase and the apparatus. Um, I just, I wanna, I wanna just take a moment to note, I know that we just purchased an apparatus, signed for an apparatus in twenty twenty. And it finally came in April of last year. The cost of that apparatus, if you were building today and sign tomorrow. Is a twenty-five percent higher than it was. So they are seeing steady increases of all equipment and apparatus of twenty to thirty percent. Every year, that that's just the the inflation and the climate that we're in.
So chief, if we decide to buy this now, and like I said, it's an eight-hundred day leg, right, will we lock it in at the price now?
Think that is the, that is the great question, um. There's, there's been a lot of back and forth on that, there's been communities that have had the price change on them. And uh they've run into problems. Uh, but there's also communities that are buying it on the cooperative that we will be purchasing it under and have had no issues at all. Um, but there's, you, there's no way to guarantee what that price is going to wind up being on that last night. But I, I haven't heard anybody had an issue with the. The program that we're using.
When you say cooperative, what do you mean?
Dan.
Yeah, so the the quote is from uh um source through uh HGAC, which I believe is the Houston Galveston area cooperative. Uh, we purchased equipment from them in the past, uh the electrician's bucket truck uh was purchased to them. I think we worked with um MEMS uh when their last ambulance purchase, we actually got the vendor to use the HGAC pricing. More competitive than the original point they received, so it's been a good uh, good solid uh option for us.
Mayor, many departments.
I'd be forty words under that same one as well, so we didn't have any issues with that.
I mean, Houston has a national reputation for uh murder service.
So that is, that is the whole presentation for tonight, if there's any other questions.
Do you want to, what are questions?
No, I think you did an excellent job, thank you.
Everybody did. Does anybody have questions?
Uh, no, everything um that James has has described for the vehicle, so I do wanna add one thing that um. We're making it a policy within the staff that um if any vendor, um once we issue the PO, raises our prices, um you don't no longer work with that. So it's that, it's in their peril if they want.
And and if the price, and if we get a price increase, it'll come back to us?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, we're. It's it's.
I'll just take it out of the corner of my.
The vendor, the vendor that we work with, um he's not, you know, a stranger to the area, he was born and raised in Washington. Um, he, he's not gonna wait until twenty twenty-five to tell you that there's been a price increase on the shores. As he sees the climate change and as he sees the dozens of other pieces of equipment that have been purchased by the surrounding community, the time we just bought two pieces. Um, as he sees those coming, if there's price changing, he's definitely going going to advance.
They had a hard time, they bought, when I, when I was there, they bought a truck and the truck was skewed and they had to send it back, it was a big, it was a thing.
Major, major problem.
It was a major problem, yeah, and truck went down the street like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh so the the question to the board is, is everybody finally putting this on for the regular session? Uh, what is that, the twenty-seventh?
Yep, yes, yeah, if you have additional questions, we'll ask them, I think, I think.
Manny?
Yeah.
Laura?
Yes.
Alani?
Yes.
Alright, so how this usually works, almost all the time is, you you bring a an issue like this to the board at the work session. We discussed it at the work session, you don't make a decision at night, but we put it on for the regular session, uh the next meeting, the next meeting is the twenty-seventh. Uh, so, you know, you you're looking good on the twenty-seventh, if you wanna come dressed up nice, you know, let the community see uh what you do, my suggestion. But uh, you know, you you look good for the twenty-seventh, alright?
Good now.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys and thank you for everything you do, the guys and gals, and you you do a great job and we appreciate it. And we wanna make sure as you do that job, you have everything you need to keep yourself safe and the community safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, the next. Customers.
Still coming, thank you.
That we have here tonight. Uh, and we're gonna take them, is especially a proposal that has to do with the future of the Board of Control. And with uh hence L M C TV. Uh. The board will indulge me for a minute. So that I can get my thoughts together. Um. Talk about this for a minute. Uh. It's a little history of me in the Board of Control. I became a trust, I was elected trustee. In uh two thousand and four, and at the time I was the only member of my political party that had a seat on the Board of Trustees. Uh, so the uh. The mayor at that time gave me one liaison assignment and only one liaison assignment, and that was to the Board of Control. Uh, and you know, I, the reasons for that were his reasons and me. It really worked out because it it got me to understand how L M C and the Board of Control worked. Uh, it had, it it increased uh my respect and admiration for the job that L M C has done. Low these forty-something years. Uh. To me. The Board of Control and its relationship to L M C is a partnership. Uh, at one point, our our four fathers and mothers in this community decided that it was imperative. That when cable TV was coming into the community, that. We directed the resources that cable TV gave the community to build something special. And we built something special, uh something that no other community around us has, something that's the envy of many communities. A, an organization that at the time knit all three communities, the Village of Largemont, the Town of Maricopa and the Village of Maricopa together. It it was another uniting force. Uh, and it worked well for a lot of years. And then, you know, as as happens, uh people forget their primary purpose, right? And the primary purpose from L M C TV was to educate the community, to show the community how the government works, to tell the community stories. And to, in times of trouble, which we have all experienced these last uh three or four years. To act like a conduit for the government to reach out to the members of the community, especially who need help. Uh, and to show them what we are doing, to show them how it's getting done, to show them how they can get help, and to once again knit us all together. Now. The emergencies pass, you know, and uh I think people forget just how integral L M C TV has been to the growth of this community. And especially to the not-for-profits, uh because we have a lot of not-for-profits and. As government officials, we all depend upon them. Uh, I can't tell you the number of people that I have uh referred to the C R C. I can't tell you the number of families that I've told about the Community Council Center. Uh, and you know, L M C TV, I look at L M C TV like those two uh entities, they are. Very important to us as a community, so. I don't know, a year, year and a half ago, Largemont announced its intention uh to leave the Board of Control. And you know, that I I'm not gonna, you know, that's their decision. And you know, that, I, I'm not gonna, you know, that's their decision and you know, they, they, you know, they, they have their own uh. Community to run over there. Uh, so that left the Town of Mamaronek and the Village of Mamaronek as the two surviving members. Of the Board of Control. We, we, I, I talked to members of the. Town Board and I, you know, heard from uh, them about their views on moving forward. So I asked them, you know, instead of just having conversations, I have the conversation with my whole board. And just tell me what it is you have in mind, because it was coming out in drips and drams. And they sent the proposal and uh, the proposal to me, uh. It changes the relationship that L M C TV and the three, two municipalities have from one of partners. Uh, to one of uh, customers and providers, right? So there's not that relationship anymore. Of we're all in this together. Uh, it, it's, it's more like, you know, we're shopping for a service and right now we've picked you. Uh, so you know, there are a lot of things, you know, about that proposal. Uh, yeah, and, and I understand part of uh. Their argument, oh, not their argument, their, 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 their views is that, you know, this is. The, uh, Water Control is a, is a I M A, this is just another I M A. I, it's a municipal agreement. Thank you. Uh, sometimes I lapse into jogging. But, you know, it, it, right now. L M C TV, let's just say they decide that their uh, the studio lights are obsolete and they need new studio lights. They come to the Board of Control and the, at the time, three members of the Board of Control uh, would review the request. And uh, provide for it because the Board of Control has been a recipientory of both the franchise fees and the peg money. So we had, the peg money is the, the, the capital money that the, the cable franchises pay to the community. That's supposed to just go to capital improvements like cameras, lights, microphones, you know, courting, you know, you know. You know, the stuff that you made your living during. Uh, so. If that would have changed now. The people from L M C TV would have to go to this board, make a presentation. They would have to go to the Town of Mamaronek Board, make a presentation. They would have to go to Largemont's Board and make a presentation. And you know, what if three members of one of those boards, you know, don't want to? Move forward. What do we do then? It, 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 it always, to me, this was something that operated seamlessly. And operated seamlessly for forty something years. And I was very sad when Largemont left, but as I said before, that's, you know, their want. Uh, and, but I think that we have to really think carefully. Do we want to not have a Board of Control? Uh, you know, the, the uh. One of the reasons to getting rid of the Board of Control is that, you know, the uh, the administrator gets a, a small stipend and the controller. Of the Board of Control got a small stipend.
The controller is a uh.
The controller is the, the administrator is by, by the agreement. The administrator is the village manager, the village of America.
And the controller is the town of.
The controller is the Town of Mamaronek's control. And this has been going on uh, since time immemorial. Uh, so we have, we have that. And uh, you know, I, I, I have been thinking about this a lot and of course we need to. Revamp the I M A becau- or, or the, or the Board of Control because now, there are now only two members. And so what, what the town wants to do is have all those funds go directly to each municipality. Uh, and then they, they wanna have a Chinese menu of what uh, you can get from L M C TV. You know, a, a premier package for a municipality and a standard package, like we will order in H B L. And I think that, you know, their signal there is, hey, Village of Mamaronek, you know, you, you're, you're televising your. Planning Board and Zoning Board and uh, you know, H Z M C meetings and we're not. But to me, you know, that, that's just because you, you, you haven't taken the initiative to do that. And we've taken the initiative to have, you know, that be more open to the public. And, you know, sixty percent of the Village of Mamaronek. Are Town of Mamaronek residents. So you know, the, their community has wanted that too. And just because those sixty percent reside in the Village of Mamaronek, they're still Town of Mamaronek residents. So I, I would hope that my friends and colleagues in the Town of Mamaronek would realize that. Uh, and it's, it's not just all about dollars and cents, right? If, if it were, then you know, we'd be in another business. Uh, government is always all about that. So what, what I would like to do and you know, a, a person, but I, I would like to revise the Board of Control Agreement. And come back to them with ideas of our own and enter into uh, you know, kind of a negotiation with them. Uh, you know, I, 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 all of you know, I, I had sent an invitation to all of the town board members and. My colleagues here, that the ten of us would meet around the table and try and talk about it and get to know where everybody really is on this. And to have open discussions about this and have everybody, you know, have their voice heard. And maybe, you know, come to a, a, a collegial and uh, you know, professional manner of a decision. Or at least know everybody's mind. Uh, but you know, they, they, you know, uh, decided to go a different path. Uh, so tha- that's my history with this. That's where I am. And you know, I'd, I'd like to know what my colleagues feel about this.
I, I personally think it's sad just being in this community for so long and having L M C and especially, I just don't know how it would work with our school district. That's the number one question, Mamaronek School District. Because you air their, um, you air their uh, school board meetings, you record all, like predominantly all their sports, like how does that work? And nobody, like, we're saying input, whereas, so that, that.
Scarf there.
It's a lot and it's almost like emotional. I can't imagine what it is for you guys. Um.
I, I would.
I don't, I don't see how this is possible. I, I don't have any ideas right now, but I, I. Do believe that we need to keep it. That's one. Um, I'm hoping that maybe possibly the Town of Mamaronek could come back to the board, to the joint board and say that we do need to meet. Um, as a group, uh, two boards. Um, I don't have any definite like ideas right now.
And, and this, this isn't the last conversation. You know, but I, 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 I promise that I will. Approach the issue and I, and I am.
Well, I mean, what's the mechanism to, for, for doing this? If, I mean, if there's, if, if Largemont has opted out. Um, there are now two entities left. If the, if our board and the Town of Mamaronek Board don't come to an agreement. What happens or is there a provision for some sort of mediation of an agreement?
Well, I, I, from what I can see, and uh, Bob, you could look at the agreement, you know, and, and uh, come get back to us and see if I'm wrong. Uh, what I see is we're still in an agreement, in, in agreement with the Town of Mamaronek. You know, that they had signatories to the agreement. The, the agreement has a mechanism for leaving the agreement. Largemont uh, exercised that mechanism and left the agreement. So that left two members in the agreement. Uh, it didn't, Largemont leaving did not kill the agreement.
Right. I mean, but if the, if, if the Town of Mamaronek gets leaves and we don't wanna leave.
Well.
Is there still a mechanism?
Uh, if the Town of Mamaronek, you know, wants to leave and doesn't wanna, you know, go through a negotiation, they can do the same as Largemont did. That where you have to give a year's notice. Uh, there's a certain point in the agreement, I believe, when it's required that you have to give a year's notice. There's like a. Uh, uh, a, a, a time, like I think it was November, you have to give a year's notice on November twenty eighth. Very, but that's the only time you could do it. So they would have to give a year's notice in November twenty eighth of twenty twenty-three.
Does their resources change dramatically?
See, that, that, that's what we have discussed, right? I mean.
I, I kinda feel like this is when we, there was a study to dissolve the Town of Rye, but it, they didn't include anybody else in the study, so like. That it, it would have involved, Largemont Mamaronek would have involved the Town of Mamaronek. It didn't really work. Like, is there, are we? We're having this conversation now, but maybe. It, it's going to be another seven months before the town makes a determination. Is there a way to work out?
I wa- I wanna engage in a negotiation with the town.
Yeah, I'd say, we should be figuring out how to solve the problem, not figuring out.
Right, I, I, I only talked about how determination worked, cause you asked about it.
Well, because if we don't come to an agreement, what, uh, you know, what's, what is?
That's, that's the worst case scenario.
I, I, I would think that, that uh, that we're being too pessimistic. I mean, what you got from them was not a, 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 an. An expressed intention to leave the agreement. You got a proposal.
Yes, exactly.
So we can say, okay, we have your proposal. Uh, let's sit down all ten of us and, and, and see where we are. And uh, and uh, we, they have a, um, we have almost two years to, 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 to deal with it. I think the Board of, uh, uh, it's, I liken it to the breakup of the, uh, of Yugoslavia. I mean, it's, there's still. There's still two.
Not with the same result.
No, you obviously have the same result, but there's still a rump state left there. And, uh, and uh, so we, we, we tell them, let's, let's, let's. Uh, work through the, uh, through the uh, mechanism we have. And um, and if you, if we, we get to the point where you want to withdraw, then that you're gonna have to. Withdraw, you have to have to do that, but let's figure it out and see if we can sit down around and figure it out.
So, I, I, I think, right, it's, that's what I was getting at, you know, offer a, a set of amendments to the current. Board of Control Agreement. I wanna stay within the, the, the. Stay within the confines of the Board of Control, but just uh, you know, amend it and modernize it. And you know, i- if they think that it's costing too much, talk about costs.
Sure.
Uh, but you know, it, it, I don't think it's fair to just say, oh, it's costing too much, we're gonna get rid of it, without thinking about, you know, what are ways to mitigate that? You know, what, what are ways to, uh, you know, Jerry's not happy hearing that.
I'm also not sure that the ten of us are the only, I mean, I mean, obviously, the ten, the, the two sets of boards have to make a determination. But I think there are other people who are in this room who have a lot more experience figuring out what, what the parameters should be.
Well, I, I think, I, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It just. Do we service the Rye next school district? So is Rye a part of this soon?
No. Rye, you know.
Can we add them? Do you take out one?
Right, Rye has, Rye has, um, I think Rye has their own.
Yeah, but it, it's like, you know, it, it, my comparison is, you know, Rye is Sandlot. And they're the Yankees.
But there, there's a number of ways we could go. We could, we could shop for a new partner to replace Largemont. Uh, we, uh, which, which might include uh. A, another municipality uh, along the Sound Shore. We could, we could continue with just the two uh. Two uh, participants we have now. Uh, we could, I guess, for want of a better term, take it private and, 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 and. And be the, be the, the sole uh, uh, I guess patron of, 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 of L M C. At which point I'd wanna rename it. Uh, but um, uh, there's a number of ways we could, we, we, we could go. I think we need to sit down with, with the other participants and, and uh, and, and hammer it out. And uh. And you know, I, I think the, the main participants, if you talk about this, this, this menu, I think you'd say. Yeah, okay, that, that menu, that menu is for people who aren't part of the agreement. But if you're part of the agreement, you're taking, you got the deluxe package because you're a. You know, and, and that's not, that's not a question, that's, that's, you, you're agreeing to that upfront.
That, that, that's, that would definitely be something I would support as a negotiating position.
Cause that's also good government is that we're encouraging.
Yeah.
The tele- televised uh, uh, meetings. I mean, for one thing, uh, we found out that Largemont. Uh, decided this in a work session that was not televised.
Yeah.
So that's why we didn't know about it ahead of time. No, nobody. So, you know, that, that's. That runs counter to the whole, all, all good government, open government and uh, uh, thrust behind what L M C is.
And, and, and albeit for me, blow my own horn.
Oh, please.
But uh, you know, those meetings, land use board meetings are televised because I fought the two years to get them televised.
Yes.
And uh, you know, that, that's of, of an important legacy to me. And I think that the community has benefited and profited by it.
I mean, I, I've learned a lot of things by people who said, hey, I was watching the land use board the other day. I was watching this board the other day. Uh, what do you know about that? And sometimes I'll just, you know, you'll be able to parachute in on, on, on a meeting and, and, and listen. And because that's, you know. Uh, you, you know, I'm, I'm home, I'm doing something else, but um, you know, but the. The, the planning commission is up on the, on the screen. It's, 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 it's really a remarkable uh, tool and, and I think we need to hang on to it.
Manny?
I, I'm just trying to like, as everybody's talking, I'm just trying to imagine what a, our communities would be like without L M C. I think it's something that's been around. Like, I think about when my start is and how my involvement, I couldn't be at every board meeting. So my way to staying was going online and watching it and just having it running in the background. So to think that. You know, other, the other, sadly, the Town of America would, you know, I don't think they're gonna wanna leave, as Lou said, but. That it's even being like considered, it's, it's crazy to me. I just think we needed whatever we can to kind of. Not convince them to have, have, um, understand what the meaning of it is and how important it is or how the history of it has been within our community. I think that broadcasting, meeting, sports, I think that's really gives, you know, the opportunity for everybody to kind of feel like they're participating. Within our government or in our community.
Uh, the, I, I agree with you. And I think that I, I. And I hate to say this with the folks from L M C TV in the room, cause I don't want to scare them, but I, I honestly don't believe. That L M C TV as the robust entity that it is now, uh. Would survive without us as partners. Uh, you know, I, 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 I don't think, uh. That relationship of customer client is gonna be enough to carry you through. Uh, and uh, you know, I, what, I understand why it happened, but uh, it, it was kind of. One of those, and, and this, this is exactly sometimes the problem with government. Two thousand and ten, you know, everything went to heck uh, with the housing market. Uh. The uh. The communities were looking at, you know, uh, bad economic times. Let me just back up. From its inception, uh, the three boards, Largemont, Mamaronek and the Town of Mamaronek. Never took any of the franchises. That money was always dedicated to L M C TV. Uh, two thousand and nine, the economy falls apart, budget year two thousand and ten. Uh, they decide to start taking money uh, from the franchises. So there's, there's two problems here is that, you know. The community started taking that money, which lowered the available money. And quite frankly, as we all know, less people are signing up. For basic cable, for cable TV. You know, they don't get money when people sign up for just the phone and the internet. Uh, there are no franchises. The franchise fees only apply to the purchase of cable television packages. So, you know, a, a lot of people cutting the wire, uh, young folks today. I don't know anybody under forty who gets, doesn't, you know, who gets cable anymore. Uh, you know, so there's a shrinking customer base that we, you know, have to be realistic about. But then there was also, you know, the municipalities, you know, it, to, to solve a short-term problem. Damaged a long-term institution. And that's what we have to be careful of as governments, you know, it, it's sometimes you just gotta bite the bullet. And uh, you know, not uh, as they say, eat the corn seed, right? So that there's nothing to plant the next year. Eat the seed corn. Uh, so, I, I, would it, would it be fair to say? If I, if I were to write back the supervisor of the Town of Mamaronek tomorrow, that we, we are open to negotiations. About changing the Board of Control Agreement and we still would like. If the town could see the way clear uh, uh, to meet. As a, a group to try and uh, you know, have frank and open discussions about this. Would you all be alright with that? Okay. And, and you know, lo- lo- let me just preface this by, this by saying, you know, I served on the Town of Mamaronek Board. Uh, for a number of years. And they are good public servants and good people and the, the, you know, we just. See this issue a little differently from each other. And uh, you know, they, they definitely have the best interest of this community at heart. And they definitely wanna do the right thing for everybody. But this is why you sit down together so that you could hear opposing points of view. And you know, maybe they'll say something that, that affects us and affects how we feel about this situation. But I think the dialogue is important to have, cause. This is too important. And if we blow it, it's blown. Right? And you know, you, you, you can't put the uh, you know, it, it, the, the egg back in the shell, right? So let's make sure we do it right and it shouldn't just be done, you know, via, you know, emails between me and the supervisor of the town. via, you know, emails between me and the supervisor of the town. Uh and as as Nora pointed out, there are other stakeholders here. And those stakeholders should have a voice and they should hear the discussions and be able to, you know, respond to the discussions because, you know, we don't know everything. You know, and I certainly don't. And uh it it would be interesting to have other people's, you know, uh input, you know, that I I look at the board of the members of uh L M C T V board that are sitting here tonight and, you know, a lot of them have been on there a long, long time. Uh and uh, you know, Matt uh was pretty much been uh since he was a young man working at L M C T V. You know, Mike Witch has been involved in a TV in this community since its inception. Can I tell a story, Mike? Can I tell the story?
Okay.
I always say to my kids, you would not be here if it was not for Mike Witch. When 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 I went to Boston University, my children's mother uh was in the school of communication. And she said she was inspired to go into school communication because she had a teacher named Mike Witch. So as an eighteen-year-old kid from New York City, I heard that name nineteen seventy-nine. And lo and behold, Michael is still here inspiring young people uh to get involved and to nurture us. For my children, thank you, Mike. For their existence.
I I hope you had some good with it also.
Yeah, I hope so. Uh so that that's what we're gonna do.
All right.
We we're gonna write our friends uh at the town and tell them our feelings and then see what happens.
And and you know, and and again, Tom, I I I think this was an initial reaction. A lot of a lot of these uh they're, you know, they have the same fiduciary responsibility as we do. And and so they they look at it and and sometimes you can look at it just in terms of money. But um if this goes away, it'll be impossible to recreate.
Yeah.
Uh for any amount of money that we'd be willing to spend. So I I think it's worth investing in now.
You know, I think that we rely on L M C T V for meetings and the town relies on it less for meetings, but I don't think that's really what the essence of L M C T V is. So while I think that our the fact that our meetings are televised and the great variety of them are televised is significant. That's, you know, that's just one part of what L M C T V does for the entire community. And that that's not coming out in this in this discussion.
Right, about the accessibility, the inclusion, the stories, the families, like that is the most important thing.
I mean, I think.
And our children, like, God, I can't.
Right, Jerry, uh during COVID and during the flood. Right? How much do we lean on L M C T V?
Yeah, in so 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 COVID, COVID's hard to remember because it was um really a s- significant event. Um and we had to do so many things so quickly in advance of what we thought were um um were gonna be impacts to our community. But I can tell you that FEMA um is working well with us and providing us all sorts of reimbursement levels, um not seen in other communities because of the work that Matt and L M C and FEMA provided us with documentation. Uh we have documentation um that they told us that no other community has. So we're talking about millions of dollars, not hundreds of thousands. We're talking about millions of dollars.
And and launching that drone that drone, the drone video of the flood was I mean, I mean, I have a drone. I was afraid to launch it. I didn't want to lose it. So.
You know, they say pitches, you know, as you will know, pitch is worth a thousand words. All right, uh so that's what we'll do. Uh I appreciate you all coming out today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Just been close so far.
Well, bless the evening.
That's so awesome, good.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Jeff, take care. So Jeff, I can steal a good idea now.
Pardon?
I can steal a good idea now.
So the 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 judges are here for uh
Uh keep going, let's go.
Let's go back to the agenda.
We're still going back up.
Um there are two items for tonight's meeting on the agenda and there are eight items for next week's um meeting on the agenda without the items that are not marked for.
You're saying I'm
meaning that like a new business?
So so Nora, we have two items for the thirteenth night and then we have eight items for the twenty seventh.
Okay, we're gonna we're gonna we're gonna do the lightning round.
Let's go.
Uh review, I just want to point out, uh review of village code to include fair and affordable housing for all zones in the village. Uh trustee Lucas brought this up.
So.
And Laura, you want to say something?
Yeah, I do. It's so the law didn't, it didn't
Didn't make it.
It didn't make it to the backup on the agenda. So I think I really think we should postpone it for two weeks.
Yeah.
But I have a specific question for for Bob and
You want to ask it now?
Yeah, I well, I asked it in an email, but uh because it's a zoning change, it's in the zoning code, is it a zoning change? And is it a type one action? So maybe we can think about that for two weeks from now, too.
Yes, for sure. I will tell you, just so you all know, I will not be here two weeks from now. Mary will be here under your way.
Okay.
But she'll have Venus.
Okay, and I'll and I'll follow up with you.
On that exciting trip, Bob.
Exciting trip.
There you go.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh this next one is up to the twenty seven. Uh building and fire code administration. Do you need more time for that? Bob?
I'm sorry?
It's being held.
I know it's being held until the twenty seven, but we're doing the ones that are.
So here here's where we are. When you see this, you'll see it's a very extensive piece of legislation. I mean, I think it's thirty-five pages long. It has to conform to the state codes, the state regulations, and try to incorporate what the village has been doing. So uh the building inspector and I met last week to go through it and talk about it. She's comfortable with it at this point. I don't want to put anything before you that she was not comfortable with. I have to do one more round through because there are a couple of things. There there are a bunch of references I have to pick up to other parts of the code through there. Uh if you like, I can give it to you to look at two weeks from now without me being here to talk about it. Or I can wait until uh March.
Let's wait until March. Okay, we'll have you here.
And just so you know, at Nikon last week, we learned they're working on the next revision.
Yeah, I know, true.
Yeah.
That's good.
It's actually quite, it's actually gonna be quite important. It's it's gonna anchor a lot of the other things I'd like to do to get the code process working.
Good. I'm glad you're happy with this task because it's a big one.
Uh First Amendment, that's for uh the twenty seven. You know, I I I talked to somebody uh at uh Westchester Municipal officials the other night uh about their their cell tower agreement. And uh frankly, they gave me the number of uh somebody uh who does uh this kind of work. Uh and they review agreements and if they can, if they can get you more money, they uh they take a cut with the revenue that they got you. So I I just would wonder if the board would like to uh explore that option uh to see, you know, if that he reviews the contract and then uh decides, you know, if it's worth looking at to, you know, if he doesn't, if he doesn't, if he says you're fine, he doesn't charge you anything, if he, you know, gets a percentage of what he the extra uh money that he gets you. His name is Fran Clarkin. Uh I'd like to to have somebody reach out to him and ask him to review this. Would that be appropriate?
Is that person also, can they also review like environmental um?
I think they just reviewed a contract itself.
I've actually, I've actually worked with Fred Clark in other communities.
Oh, yeah?
Uh yeah, I have. And uh he's purely a financial guy. He has a database of all of these contracts around the country. He knows what all of these companies are making. What they're paying for their space on the on the
That's what we need, yeah.
That sort of thing. And so very successful in negotiating uh better rates.
But financially, but but are we also looking into the environmental piece?
It's a separate issue.
Well, just just on on that, trustee, as you read, number one, this is an existing power.
Yes, I understand.
In terms of the uh visual impacts and those kinds of things, it's it's not likely to change. And the second point is that federal law severely restricts what the village can look at in terms of uh these kinds of sites, in terms of the environmental impacts of these kinds of sites.
Say that again? I'm a little confused of how we allow something to come into our community that we don't really have a say. So when it comes down to the environment.
Quote, the supremacy laws of the United States Constitution.
Supremacy, look at.
Explain that again. But I'm all landlord.
So there's two pieces. What does it do with permitting? What has to do with the site? The village is already leasing this site. There's no, the question here is whether to extend the site. There's twenty-five years left on all these. The question is whether it should go to sixty years, something like that.
Sixteen, look, right, like.
I can't remember the exact.
What are years left?
There there are years left, I know. So that decision, the village, at least as far as I can see, doesn't have any ability to terminate this thing.
And and of course, it uses.
I don't care about that.
In terms of the regulation of cell towers and the thing people are concerned about, the the electromagnetic radiation, the federal government is taking that out of local government's hands. If they need, if they certify that they meet these standards established by the Federal Communication Commission, the village can't ring.
Um, there's also been a lot of discussion, especially in New York City, about insurance and whether village municipalities are adequately insured for um a future problem and whether these companies can provide us with insurance. So it might be better for us to not necessarily get higher cash influx right now, but to be sure that down the road we're covered for anything that might happen. So I'm interested in in pursuing the insurance around this as well.
Well, there are there are insurance provisions in the lease as it stands now. But those could be renegotiated as part of it.
And I don't know whether that's something he does, if he just does the financial part or he does the insurance portion, too.
Um I think he could probably tell us what those provisions generally are.
Jerry, I just sent you the Jerry, I just sent you the gentleman's uh email. That email, I'm sorry, phone number.
And 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 I'll I'll say that the the uh the um matter you brought up, uh a lot of it is is been brought up in board meetings in
Other municipalities.
Many, oh, thousands of municipalities nationwide, uh uh you know, because we used to do these stories when I when I worked, I used to have colleagues that did these stories. It always came down to that where they they don't want to hear it. They don't want to hear that uh that uh that part of the argument. And you're they're precluding from uh precluding from raising it. So I think the question.
Money. It's all about money at the end of the day.
Yeah, I know, but but it's it's just bigger than we can we we can deal with. So our issue is, are we getting the best deal? And do we want to extend it? I think that's the only thing we can deal with at this point.
And are we covered to the max?
Recovered, sure.
Possible for any.
But but what you're talking about, you're 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 gonna beat your head up against the wall on that.
No, I won't.
Okay.
All right. Uh, one A, uh partial property taxes exempting for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Jerry, you want to explain this?
Uh mayor, in December of twenty twenty-two, Governor Volker signed the law, amended chapter whatever chapter it was. Uh basically, um
Section forty-six, four six six A of real property.
There you go.
It was a tip.
It wasn't. So so it 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 provides an option um for local municipalities, school district and school districts in 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 our things. Um provide a a tax exemption of up ten percent uh for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. Basically, uh provides an exemption for them on their assessed value, thereby shifting the um assessed value a little bit for its non.
And and this doesn't cost us a lot, does it?
Doesn't cost us anything.
But, you know, as Jerry points out.
Moving numbers.
Moving numbers.
It costs us personally something. It costs those of us who are not worker uh volunteers.
Got it, understood.
And and you heard Chief Horn this evening, how many volunteers on that?
Mm hmm.
And I would say we probably have a couple of dozen volunteer ambulance um members in our in our community.
The least we can do.
Yeah, because and also we're trying to keep these men and women in the community so that uh we don't have to hire uh
Not that source.
Outside.
And and I'm happy that ambulance workers are included, so that that's that's good.
They know MEMS MEMS is an undersung resource here. I mean, I those those poor folks, they don't get enough credit. Uh they don't get enough recognition. We should have a MEMS night here.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if you've ever needed an ambulance and called them and, you know, they've come and they're they're smart and they're gracious and they're caring and they, you know, most of them are volunteers.
And we we were sitting in the back of the room, but but Chris Bradbury uh from Roger, he had a great presentation. I've seen that presentation before.
Yes.
And he really has some very very interesting information regarding, you know, um the need and and the problem that the state has because it's not considered an essential service like police and fire.
People would be shocked to know that we're not required.
Right.
We're not required to provide, to make sure that 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 emergency, and and which is just stunning to me.
Yeah. Yeah, and
That'd be a great idea, man.
Full disclosure, I have a, my youngest son is training to be an EMT.
Yeah, God bless him.
Good job.
He's a good boy.
Exactly, yes.
So this is the local law, so that's what I pass on to my friend.
Is everybody fine with uh continuing on the path of this?
Yes, two weeks.
Yeah, okay. Bob, two weeks, good?
Yeah, I think we've got it.
You got it? All right, so put it on
It's here.
Public says schedule a public hearing for two weeks.
It's all marked up.
Yeah, there's more changes. I think you just have to reference both the so assessors in the American. Okay, so we can talk to Mary about that.
You can go to schedule, schedule a public hearing on the twenty seventh. Right? All right. Uh, one F, establishing a designated reserve fund for supplemental income for volunteer firefighters injured in the line of duty.
So mayor, last year, uh the board were kind enough and and smart enough to set up a a fund for volunteer firefighters. Um, not very many people know, but when a volunteer firefighter uh is injured as a volunteer um responding to a call or fire, an incident here in the village, um they do not qualify for workers' compensation. They only qualify for a certain stipend for provision in the state law that gives them um just over four hundred dollars per week. Individuals even um even even in in more remote communities of um New York State um could not, uh individuals could not, you know, survive on four hundred dollars a week if they were um if they were injured in in the line of duty responding to a fire or an incident. And so um what we presented to the board and what the board approved was to create a special reserve fund in the event that um individuals were uh injured responding to a village of American fire uh that we would have um a level in addition to whatever the state qualification is um to compensate them, try to help them out during that time, period of time when they're out of work. And so um we haven't yet at the uh fire department level, but we expect at fire council level to um create some guidelines regarding this. Um but in basic terms, we have discussed potentially just doubling what the state is for the period of time that the individuals have, just to give them some further assistance. So it's very limited.
And and this is
Match, match what the state is giving.
Match what the state, yeah. And the state has three levels. So if you break your finger, you get twelve dollars a week. Um if you hurt yourself significantly, you get four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
And and because the state's involved, I guess they would be in 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 involved in making sure that this was in fact a a line of duty injury.
So the approval from the state would initiate or would would trigger the matching from from the village funds.
Okay.
And most of all, volunteer firefighters, uh I I wouldn't say exclusively, but the the large majority work in the trades. Uh they work in, you know, government D P W areas like that where you can't you know, sit at home with a broken arm and still log into work.
Hmm. You have a couple of I P professionals and things of that nature that that with a broken arm or a broken hand or something along those lines, but Now we're also talking about burning buildings and fires and things.
Yeah.
Talking about some severe, severe injuries that. I don't think the state provides enough, but that's, you know, that's not our problem.
And also, if it's, if it's, many of our firefighters are village employees. But because they're not doing a village job when they're fighting a fire, they're, they don't qualify for.
The regular comp.
Regular comp.
Correct. Correct. It would be, it would be better if they got hurt while they were doing their village.
Okay, that's, that was, uh, the, the, my, my concern always is is that somebody gets hurt, uh, you know, and then says that I got hurt on the job when they've. Got hurt at home playing with the cat.
Yeah, no, but, but Chris actually went into a fire and they would not qualify for. So this would set aside, cuz we haven't had, um, and we were, we've been fortunate enough. Uh, last year not to have any injuries. This would set aside that hundred thousand dollars in the event that, um, individuals, yeah, would, would be. So be a reserve fund.
And it's, I assume it's in a fund that's interest-bearing. And like, that's an Augie question and then.
Augie gets the interest, Nora.
And then it just gets replenished if need be, but there's always a.
It would be, it would be a fund set aside.
And if we need to replenish it, the Board of Trustees would replenish it.
It would be part of the operating budget. It would be part of the operating budget.
Oh, so by, okay, so.
This was in annual, this was, this was in the operating budget last year.
Okay, but we didn't fund it?
So we're setting it aside.
Okay, so if it dips low a certain level.
Basically, so it's not going to be in the operating budget, but because we will have this set aside. We won't be adding a hundred thousand dollars to this fund every year is the question.
I think, I think we probably should have that conversation during budget season, but, uh, um. It would be up to the board to make that decision at budget season, whether they fund it again, additional hundred or smaller amount or not at all. And then create some kind of a policy of, you know, of a cap, right? You know, fund it if it. So the fact that it wasn't used.
It's good.
It's good, but it, we have to set aside this money, um, to, um, to have it in the future in the event that we have.
Need to be ready. Need to be ready.
Right.
The Lonnie would try to.
Nope, similar to what she was asking.
Everybody else up here with this?
Great.
Manny?
Yep.
Traffic Commission.
Yay.
Traffic Commission recommendations for February twenty-seven. Rescind no parking restriction on the north side of Stewart between South Berry. And Guy, so it was gonna say all the parking away from the north side of Stewart. Oh, rescind no parking.
Yes.
Because I can, I, I drive there all the time. It's the gas station, which is now the, 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 the emergency medical place. That, there was no parking there because there was a footman that was checking wells. And that equipment's been gone for quite a long time, but the parking was never replenished.
And the residents there like it to be on that, so they need it.
Those apartments.
Yeah, well, it's residential.
It's been single, it's single family homes on that section of.
It's by the bridge, right? The, the bridge over the, uh, waterway? But people who, people who like to fish off the bridge.
Two houses after the, um, emergency medical facility.
I, I think it's a good idea.
And you turn right and it's right there.
Right. I think the people that live over there are kind and loyal people. Work hard for this community. All right, Augie?
The apartments there, the apartments there have garages and overflow park. So there's, there isn't much in the way of. It's not like the Santa Mor Road, one fifty-one Santa Mor Road situation.
Yeah, I, I, I get a resident, and then this is, you know, tangential to this, but I get a resident, uh, and, and I was. Over her house and she lives on South Berry and her sump pump hole still gets a sheen. Like a sheen of oil. Right? And she's called, uh, whatever it was, company, Exxon, who was it? Exxon, the people who bought you the Valdez, and, uh, they say it's not them, but it's, it's hard to believe. It's, it's down the block. What? Yeah.
These gas stations that you have there, right?
Exactly.
Just that one.
I, I think that they closed the, they closed the remediation, uh, but she still has problems. I, I'm gonna. I'm gonna send it to you. Uh, removable parking spaces on Mount Pleasant Avenue to enhance site. Visibility in the vicinity of the intersection with Stanley Avenue. So this would be where the graveyard is there.
Uh, actually, that's the other side. I think it's the, uh, uh, bike, uh, or whatever. Uh, no, stay on. Yeah. I think this, this is just to remove, uh, one space on, I can see the island side just to enhance the. Visibility for the traffic that's exiting, uh, Stanley going on to Mount Pleasant.
Make it a right of Mount Pleasant?
Well, both actually.
Also take parking on both sides.
Yeah.
So it will make it easier for the orders to, uh, see what's going on, cuz we've had a couple of, uh. See, there was at least one accident.
I understand it, but I tell you, for someone who's spent a lot of time in apartments in the Village of America. And, uh, even, you know, not the place I have now, but other places that, you know, you had on-street parking. Uh, was your own little charity. It will make it harder and harder to park in this area.
Yeah, yeah, well.
I mean, I, I, I'm not saying, I'm not gonna, but I'm just saying we, we have to keep that in mind.
No, no, I, I think that a meeting has gone by where the traffic commission has asked us to remove some parking spaces.
So, so I think it's, it's the prevalence of, of TV's giants.
Yeah, I can see that.
That's what it's.
So can you make it like a area just for compact cars? Like, is, does that make?
There is, it's, it's difficult to enforce compact car parking.
That's true, cuz I tried to.
Definition of compact cars up.
Well, the way you do is you, you paint the box. If you can fit in the box, you don't get a ticket. If you don't fit in the box. You, you get taken for parking outside the lines.
Unless there's somebody out there with a panic can of paint.
All the, all the progress that we received from these complaints in that.
Yeah, we, we, where I live over on Richville, uh, the driveway that leads to the parking area. Uh, gentleman had an SUV and he had the front spot that goes right by the sidewalk. And the other night, uh, the, the fire department had to get in. And it was very difficult and they actually had to get Mike Iainusi, who's a professional, but one of our volunteers. And because he, you know, he does this every day, he slowly got the truck in. But, you know, they said to the management company, that car can't be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Done, right? So it's on for the.
Is everybody all right with putting that on?
Absolutely.
Next week?
Yes.
Fire Department presentation.
F and G of tonight.
Give me a second. Uh, adoption of twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget plan for.
Where, 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 who we know? What, what happened to H?
H I J. We're going, no, we're going through stuff that. Pay attention.
Tom's trying to get stuff that's.
Right, come on. Jesus.
Uh, adoption of capital plan. Uh, for February thirteenth. So we, we, we had a meeting, uh, when night was it? January thirtieth?
Yeah.
We had a meeting January thirtieth and, uh, the board, uh. Moved to put this on the agenda for tonight. Jerry, is there anything new or additions or?
Priorities, uh, the, the department, um, when the board discussed with department heads. Um, the resolution has the two most important items.
Yeah, they've all submitted the, the.
And then at current, at current, um, not in the resolution, because it fluctuates, but at current levels. Um, because we are double A plus, uh, every million dollars that you borrow is ninety thousand dollars in principal. And interest for every million dollar. For every million dollars you bond, you pay ninety thousand dollars in principal and interest payments. To pay that.
Per year.
That goes into the operating budget.
So that is, is that dependent upon the term of the bond?
And also interest rates.
Only what's the common term?
Assuming twenty percent, a twenty-year bond at two and three-quarter percent. That assumption.
What were we borrowing a couple of years ago?
Uh, less than one percent.
Less than one percent.
Now we're close to four.
So it could be higher than that, than that, than that number.
Conservative number, ninety thousand.
That's a conservative number, okay. And are we bonding for twenty years vehicles? I mean, how, I mean.
When we go out to bond, our financial advisor and our bond attorney tells us what's the PPU, the prior probable use of this of that item. And that's legally the bonds for.
So we're not bonding, so some of the items on this, we can't bond, right, for.
Some items, some items have a certain number of years by law, right term, so. But when we go out to bond, we bond in an aggregate, we go out for one sale.
But it's more than one bond. Because the bonds have to match what item we're actually purchasing.
Yeah, we'll come to anywhere between five or six, six different bonds or.
Right, no.
Put together, then they're separated by the period of probable use on this speech item.
There's a lot of paperwork when we vote on those. I, I mean, I'm concerned that it's an awful lot of money over five years and that we don't really know what the impact on our operating budget's gonna be. And it's that, so it's more of a, it's still not a capital, it's a capital plan and kind of a capital wish list. But it's not a budget because when we get to the resolution, which is the, the regular agenda, doesn't have like an amount tied to it. So I still, I feel like we're, um, what's the alternative?
Well, we did, we did prepare the resolution in a fashion that's, the final resolved plus says something to the effect that. Um, we could, this is really just to start the implementation process. But if there is author, funding authorization required, we have to come back to the board for that.
That's good, that, that, you, uh, to me, this is a process of, you know. Assessing a community's needs, recognizing the community's needs, but it doesn't lock you in. To, you know, I mean, listen, God forbid something cataclysmic happens. You know, it wipes out our reserves and, uh, taxes need to go up twenty percent. Now that things are gonna have to wait, right? I mean, we all know that. So this doesn't lock you in to those purchases, which locks you into a plan. That, uh, hopefully will allow you to then implement, you know, strategies to, to pay for this stuff. Is, is that?
The blocks of status line, you say, you as in the board, you are authorized to do this project. You are authorized to fund this project with this money.
And I, and I know what, I know what Nora is saying.
It's not, it, you know, if it doesn't have numbers, it's not a budget. It's a capital plan. It's not a budget. And the other thing is, and this is, I'm just thinking like, if it's, we're borrowing a million dollars and conservatively, that's gonna add ninety thousand dollars to our operating budget. That's ninety thousand dollars we don't have to spend on something else that's currently in our operating budget. So I feel as though. You know, on the one hand, yes, there are things that we need to do and there are things that we want to do. And there are, and we can afford to bond a lot in terms of, but shouldn't say that. We have the capacity. We'll be approved for bonding a lot, but just because you have a twenty thousand dollar limit on your credit card, doesn't mean you actually can spend that. That, that amount of money because you have to be able to pay it back. You pay it back in our operating budget.
I, I understand what you're saying and, and I had the same impulse that Nora, uh, and, but I think when I look at this. And I try to, try to imagine the, the, um, the solution, it's an equation with far too many variables and unknowns. To be able to get where we'd like to be and would make it a budget. You just can't do it because you don't know what's gonna happen. So I think, I think it's, it's, yeah, it's a wish, wish list, but I don't know how, what else we could do. I don't know how you get around it.
It, it could sort of jump in here, but we put this out. Frankly, every budget that we create every year is a wish list. And we have to sometimes move money around. We have to sometimes take, uh, from this line, put it to that line. Budgeting at its best is guesswork. Uh, you know, we, the, the idea is that you don't go over, you know, the, the number that you had. Uh, because, you know, it would go over the tax rate and you, you guess at the tax rate, you guess at what your expenses are gonna be. You hope it doesn't snow, you hope it doesn't flood, and you, you make the best choices you can. Uh, you know, we've been working on this capital plan for years. And part of why it didn't come to fruition was because we tried to get too specific. So we didn't have, you know, a capital plan budget because, you know, we, we would, you know, we, we were trying to find out. You know, what, what was gonna be the cost of lumber on the docks, uh, right? When, when you can't even predict that anymore. Because what, what something cost, as we found out from the gentleman, uh, from the fire department, what something cost last year is twenty-five percent more expensive now. So I think your concerns, I understand, but, you know, we, we deal with them when we approve the projects. Right now, we're really approving, you know, the priorities for those projects.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand that, but last year we also approved a budget and then the next week. We started dipping in the reserve fund for stuff that we hadn't put in our budget. So we didn't, you know, we didn't hear the tax cap, but we just spent a lot of money. Month after month after month after month that we hadn't anticipated buying, just taking, spending, coming out of the reserve fund. And my point is. We are, we have a very big capital plan, a spent, a capital spending plan. That conservatively, it's a hundred and, it's a hundred and ten million dollars. Some of it's grant money, some of it's gonna be reimbursable. But for every million we spend, if we bonded conservatively, that's ninety thousand dollars. That's gonna come out of an operating budget down the road. So I think that's, that's kind of, to me, a recipe. To acknowledge, acknowledging that we're gonna be raising taxes to be able to cover those operating funds. And so I, that's, that's, that's.
But an ingredient, an ingredient in that recipe is that you're paying off items as well.
Yeah, stuff that rolls out. But what's our average bond for the past ten years? We haven't, we haven't bonded twenty million dollars in a year.
We built the firehouse, uh, we built.
What if we, I mean, what's, so I think.
We built the firehouse, we bonded for the, uh, library. Both of those were at the time. Uh, library was like sixteen million dollars, the firehouse was over twenty million dollars.
Right, but the library, the library is a separate taxing district. I understand it's on our bonding, but it's not, but it's not our village taxes that's paying it off. Okay, the firehouse was, but I, I think that, you know, that would be a good comparison. What, with this projected plan, what increased bonding debt? That's gonna affect our operating budget, you know, what's the difference between what, what we've done for the past ten or fifteen years? Is it different? Have we been, have we been spending this much and still being able to increase our reserve fund? Well, then that's okay. But if we haven't been, I think we need to anticipate that and be transparent about it. That's all.
Well, uh, I just want to point out, no one has been untransparent about the budget process or about how, how we work here, you know. Yes, there's things had to come out of the reserve fund, uh, different times, but at the end of each year, the reserve fund was more than it was at the beginning of that year.
It, it's worked.
It, it's worked.
I don't, I don't.
Knowledge that.
Okay, I know, but I'm, so let me finish it, please, Nora. You know, so I think what we had to really decide is we've gotta be a community. That slowly crumbles, uh, because we are afraid that we might someday have to raise taxes. And I've been on these boards since two thousand and one and it hasn't been a year where taxes haven't been raised, uh, any board that I was on. There's never been a decrease in taxes. Uh, boards have always raised taxes. Uh, this board in the past, I don't know, seven or eight years has not gone over the tax cap. Uh, and that, I know it hasn't since you and I have been on it, Nora, and I think, uh, under the previous board didn't go over. Uh, the majority of the time, maybe once or twice they did, but my memory doesn't serve me that well. So this community has, you know, kept under the tax cap, kept taxes as low as we possibly can. But I think what we really have to be transparent with is to tell our residents that we have a crumbling infrastructure. Uh, we, we have, uh, sewers, uh, that were built, uh, before your great-grandmother was alive. Uh, you know, we have a, a water system that's ancient, you know, we have parks that, uh, are, are in desperate need of repair. And we have a village hall here that's been barely functioning for thirty years. And, you know.
On top of all the vehicles that need to be. On top of all the vehicles that need to be.
On top of the vehicles, on top of the street paving that has to be done. So, you know, it's, I, I, I understand being budget conscious, but I also really, I, I sat here and, uh, watched us delay and kick the can down the road. Uh, and, you know, to, with, with the idea, oh, we, we're doing a capital button, here it is in front of us. Uh, so, you know, we, we have worked through it. We have something that's workable. And I'm, I'm hoping that we can move this forward and hopefully, you know, put this part of it to bed so we can work on something else.
And I, I understand the anxiety there. But, um, uh, I think frankly, the collective anxiety of the past decade, uh, of the past, the, the village, from my point of view, squandered a decade of, of low interest rates by, by reacting to fear and not, and not taking advantage of it. In other words, it was free money, there was, uh, there was interest free money available for years and they didn't, they, they never acted on it. Um, uh, we can't, we can not do some of this stuff, but as we go forward, we need to be focused on alternate, uh, streams of revenue. And, uh, and what we absolutely need to do. And, and, and I don't think taxes always have to go up. I don't think they do. Uh, I think if we're smart, uh, we can, we can, uh, we can do some of these things without, uh, without the usual, without treating uh, tax revenues as a, as a, as a constant, when in fact they can be a variable if we are imaginative enough.
I also think that at some point we need to trust the people who trust our village and the good staff. The people in the various different departments who know how tight things can be in their own, their own departments. Like they're not going to just put up something that, you know, is just something that they don't need. They're, they're literally giving us their needs. And the one thing I was told when I was young, there's a difference between our wants and the needs and our wants need to be handled and handled carefully. And if we don't trust our clerk, if we don't trust our manager, if we don't trust our lawyers, we don't trust the people that are actually doing a job in which apparently have won awards and things like that. With your concerns, that's, and that's our part, that's, that's our part, what we're supposed to do is um, recognize maybe some gaps in the system, but I keep saying like, think the things need to be done and we're gonna do it being careful and being mindful and not just put everything up without being mindful of our budget.
I, I, I just don't know how, what the alternatives are. I really don't. I mean, I, I, you can't, and if we can't see the future and, 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 and put numbers on some of these, these variable, uh, variables in the equation, it's impossible to accomplish. I think what, what you want to accomplish.
Do you have a fears? I'm sorry.
I don't have a fear. I, 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 we have a fiduciary responsibilities as village trustees. I am interested in knowing how different this, this, um, debt path we're taking is from the, the debt that's been incurred for the last five or ten years. There's a capacity to accomplish these projects. There's a capacity to bond the projects, but we have to pay for the principal and interest from our operating budget. And there will be some debt rolling off, but probably not the amount of debt that we're incurring. Because what was borrowed was borrowed at a lower interest rate. And I think in general, we, we've done fewer projects in the past ten years. So I'm not saying not to do it. I'm saying, what is the impact to the operating budget? With, you know, we're going to borrow X amount of money. If we even, as, we, there's a conservative estimate, there's a not conservative estimate. What's the impact? You know, when you bond next year, it kicks in the year after. What's, what's going to be the impact in year two, three, four, five, six from now? And we talked about a ten year capital spending plan. Um, and it's a plan. It's not a capital spending budget. It's not, we're not adopting a budget. It's a plan. It's a, it's a, it's a list of things we want to do. Well, some of these things like village hall are going to be started, but they're going to roll over. So that there's going to be more spending in year six, seven, eight, nine. It's not like we have this, this list. And in, in five years, we're going to stop spending. We're still going to have projects to do. So my question is, and this was my question on the thirtieth as well. What is, what's going to be the impact on our operating budget in the future years? That's just a question that I have.
And I think it depends. The answer is it depends on what we do.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think to your point about village hall, six, seven or eight years from now, the majority of us are, are not going to be here. That, that's going to be a decision of, uh, new mayor and the majority of a new board.
But we might still be paying taxes.
I know, I'm just going to finish, please, Nora.
Sorry.
And, and, and they are going to have to assess whether spending that money fits in with their budget. We're not locking anybody in here. We're not locking future boards in. This is a board in twenty twenty-three that's saying, this was our vision in twenty twenty-three, doesn't handcuff you in twenty thirty.
Right, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll mention, we talked about the new village hall. And I made it clear that my priority in the new village hall is a new police station. One that I, that we've done, that one that we don't all have to be ashamed of, uh, first, first and foremost. This part of it, if it has to wait, it can wait. I mean, you know, this, this room is, uh, it, it's, it's not very nice, but we, we, we'll live with it. Uh, if we have to, and, and we, we could, we could prioritize how that goes along. So, um, uh, but but that's how you, I think that's how we do it. I mean, I, I know, I know what I, I want, um, uh, but I'm only one vote. You know, so it was, it's going to be our collective will and our, our collective decisions that, and, and, and each decision will affect all the others. So, so we can't answer all those, fill in a, a number for all those, uh, those variables in one, one swoop. It's just not possible.
I mean, we, we do know a number. We know that for every million dollars, it costs ninety thousand dollars approximately now. So you, you can, you can plug in the numbers there, but you know, you, I don't, I don't think that it's there to ask for specific specificity. I always miss that word, uh, specific numbers on projects. So.
Especially with inflation.
It, it's, it's, it's on for tonight. Is everybody, is there a consensus to vote on it tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And I understood, you know, and, and could you, could you consider a schedule of, uh, what debt is retiring?
The answer is yes, but it's also, it, it's going to vary. I don't know what projects, you might approve this plan, but it's just a plan. In this year, I don't know what projects the boards are going to actually approve.
No, no, no.
We took a majority on every project.
That, that's not what I'm asking. I'm not asking going forward. I'm asking looking back, what's coming off the books this year?
What's going on?
I'll have that thing first in the morning. I have that.
Twenty twenty-three, this is coming on. Twenty twenty-four, that's coming. Twenty twenty-five, that's coming. I think that might, you know, help alleviate.
It would help all of us, because I think, I think what Nora's saying makes sense. Uh, uh, believe me, I, I, I'm looking at it and like, how can we, how can we possibly know, know, know this? We can't. The answer is, we can't. Sadly, we can't. We're going to get to any of my stuff or not?
Memorial Day parade. Everybody's fine with having Memorial Day parade.
What'd you say?
Suggest. Memorial Day parade.
Oh, yeah.
It's the closest street. I don't think we need a substantive discussion on.
It's March, it's, it's May thirtieth, yeah.
Yeah, May thirty. And we are one of the few communities that still has Memorial Day parade.
Blessings.
And, and.
On May thirty.
Wait, Chris, I just want to point this out.
Pointing out.
This happened when I was on the board years ago and it was the result of work of a, of a person I was always at loggerheads with, I gotta give him credit. Uh, trustee Joe Angelata is the one who brought the, the, uh, World Day Parade back to the Village of America.
Yeah.
Angela, Angela. Joseph Angela.
Okay.
Mayor, what are you saying? Other communities don't have, every community that I've worked in are good.
I think you meant on the thirtieth.
On the.
Talking about.
There was a long time we didn't have.
Yeah.
And trustee Angela.
So you never worked in Curious Joel then?
Termawa.
Decommission.
Decommissioning of police vehicles?
Yes.
Yeah, well, just explain this a little bit.
So, uh, it's a police vehicle that is reached the end of its useful life. Uh, and we, uh, put them out to auction. And the board just needs to make the declaration that it's surplus and authorize us to put on auctions internationally. Okay. And then we.
Got a good price.
Good man. Uh, everybody's fine with that?
Yes. Jay.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-three for budget count is, uh, let's look at this for a second. Uh, so everybody had their pocket calendars up?
I have an ass bone.
Give me one second, boy.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, please do be favorable, folks. Open up your calendars and see if you have any major.
Or what they.
But you got to look at the calendar.
Yeah.
It sits on your. Two I.
Oh, oh, I see. Got it. That calendar.
Jerry, what did you say? You, you were going to say something, Jerry?
March twenty ninth?
Yeah.
To extend that meeting to nine o'clock.
Why?
Because it's revenue expensive. What we would do is we would discuss, um, the office of the court initially. And then once we complete that, we spend a significant amount of time on the twenty ninth to talk about revenue and expenses. There are going to be a slew of new revenue items that are coming in.
Propose.
Propose new revenue items and some expenses that have dropped off significantly. Budget.
Expenses that drop off significantly.
C S E A salaries.
Okay.
Um.
Need time to explain this.
Or you said something?
No, I think it's, I mean, I think it's fine. I think, I guess my suggestion would be is if we have, there may be some conflicts for trustee liaison meetings and maybe we just try and postpone them that month.
Until seven thirty or?
Yeah.
Or just the twenty ninth.
Well, I, I mean, I'm not looking at the village, I'm looking at my calendar, not the village calendar.
Yeah.
But I think maybe that would be the easiest way of doing it. So it's not a different, no, nobody has to set up, just delay the meeting a half hour.
So, does he, hold on, April, yeah, that's fine, I mean, a little bit, but on April tenth?
It's the day after, it's Easter Monday.
Here's the money, but we have a watch system.
We should, yeah, we should, we should.
Look, says it on my schedule. I'll marry to ring it, but no.
Well, let's look at the village calendar. So for April, what?
Hey Sally?
April tenth, there's a meeting.
Yes, mayor.
Sally, April tenth is a regular board meeting, right?
I can confirm in just a second.
On the calendar or your website?
Yes.
Okay, April tenth is a regular board meeting, so that's not going to work.
So we can do, we can do the third, um, April third is almost the last one.
Um, who was, who was that?
April third's fine.
Is everybody okay with April third?
So it said this, interesting, April third.
No, that's. Instead of the ten.
The tenth, okay, okay, thank you. April third, and that's, uh.
It's a non-B O T Monday.
Work session.
It's arts council, but I asked them to meet a half hour late.
Okay.
And we're at, what, what is this for again? This is the.
Budget. We, so. Those, uh, other, uh, for those who are new, uh, every department comes and they, you know, they present that.
Like they did before.
What?
Like they just did before.
No, but this, this is, they come and they, they, they just talk about their budget, they talk about what the department does, why they need increases here, what they can, you know. And it's a little, uh, kind of a, an, an ability for the, uh, staff to highlight what they do too.
Busy month, April.
Yeah.
And April eleventh is another one?
April eleventh is another. Twelve is another one, April thirteenth is still front end knowledge.
All five thirty.
You know what? I'd rather do that. Let's just.
Knock them out.
Ruin the week, let's just ruin the week.
We have to do something, that gives us time if we have to add something extra, add something extra.
On the eleventh, I might be a little late because it was just a waterworks, but not that much late.
If we have to add something, we can add it on the seventeenth. Is that as a, uh, use it, use that as a catchall.
So we should pencil that one in?
But you are old schooled.
Yeah, got it. We'll be all jacked up if we don't.
So, so, so the March twenty ninth, we used to do revenue and expense at the end. We, we switched last year to do it in the beginning.
I think it's better, don't you?
Better.
Will you have the information?
Somebody have it, uh.
The numbers have come in from the state?
On certain items.
Okay, does anybody have any conflicts that they're not mentioning?
No.
No.
Nora, you okay with those?
Yeah.
One?
As far as I can tell. If they're like, it's like with more in the.
It's a just account.
Yeah, if there's like a committee meeting, I just have to double check. Yeah, but these are over by seven thirty, so the committee meets at seven.
Normally they go to seven o'clock, right? Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
But I just, I'm going to, like, arts council's at seven, I'll just ask them to go to seven thirty. I just want to make sure.
Uh, Sally? Would you please, you don't have to answer, but just please add those to my calendar?
Yeah. Great.
And we'll use April seventeenth as a maybe if needed.
Should we put that on the village calendar as a reserved?
Yep, reserved, yeah.
All right, let's just go on to the next item.
Okay.
Uh, design and engineering service for sanitary sewer replacement for Grove Hill Street and Carroll Avenue. Subject of a public health emergency declaration.
As many of you on the board know, um, we've been doing the investigative work for the next three metered areas and final three metered, metered areas to satisfy our consent. Uh, when we're doing the investigation, um, the, um, the streets and locations that the managers are in, um, significant dis, disrepair. In fact, so much so that the, um, consultant that we're working with, Arcadis, said that they should be, um, they should be completed even before some of the other stuff in the other metered areas that were working on that. So in order to, um, expedite the process and use our current contractor, uh, I declared an emergency, public health and safety emergency for those areas. So that we can, uh, address those areas and before you is the, uh, anticipated costs for those areas.
And we think that this will greatly alleviate the issue?
This will alleviate the issue. This has to be pushed up.
And can, can, I, can, I mean, I think it's worth saying that if, even though it's being done on an emergency basis, the cost is the same as if it were being done on a non-emergency basis. It's just you're putting it into a different.
Yeah.
Mindframe.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm basically dictating that these areas have to be done first before the rest of seven, nine and ten are completed.
But they would be doing, I mean, are you, do we still have to, we don't have to negotiate a different contract with Keller Sessions. This is part of what we've already.
Part of their, right.
So we're not. Well, often when we do an emergency, it costs more money. This is a situation in which the emergency is just reshuffling of priorities, not a reshuffling of expenses.
Except there are two advantages to it, that when we have Department of Health, Department of Health review helps when there's an emergency shown by the, by the engineers, Arcadis and Keller Sessions that this could potentially impact, you know, the sanitary, right, usage of the properties in this area. Um, and the second thing is that it, um, moves all of the items that are on seven, nine and ten up to the top of the list. So we get these done first. As far as the cost, the cost is the same. And as far as the construction management, that's handled by our office now. That's handled by, um, engineer's office. So those costs, uh, don't, no longer exist. So this would be thirty eight two, I think, correct?
It's about forty five point six with the survey.
Oh, with the spinelli?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh transportation?
It's um basically some additional uh work, the uh. Uh since we're not uh doing a heating system in the, in the transportation, we need to revise a bit of the architectural work. There's a proposal from studio architecture for ten thousand nine hundred and then uh some additional surveying work. Which is about two thousand, so all told is about thirteen thousand dollars to uh revise design services.
What about the solar panels?
The, the, the building will have the ability to handle solar panel.
Then, then I think we should, you know, say, let's do it now, right? That, that, I mean, that, that, that's, well, the thing we skipped over was a policy that we'll put, put solar panels on all our roofs whenever we work on them.
Yeah. That was at the, at the budget meeting, you said you wanted a resolution for tonight's regular meeting.
Okay, all right, so, so. Okay, so this would include the solar panels?
So it doesn't include the solar panels, the structure can handle solar panels, we don't have any, we don't have an agreement with the solar panel company or anything of that nature.
And can we do that before we do the work?
We have to build the building and then we can just add solar panels to the building. If you don't have a building, you don't have, you don't have.
Oh, I got it, so this, this is not just a roof, it's a whole building or? Okay, got it.
Down in price on the building, we're not putting heat in the building and we're not putting those fast doors.
Understood, okay, oh, cuz it says roof, that's why, my mistake.
So the cost of the building is actually going to be less than what we originally anticipated.
Oh, there you go.
There's some changes in the design that we have to make.
But it, so a whole truck rolls in?
A whole truck rolls in dumps. And then at night, maybe three, four pieces of equipment are stored inside there when it's not in use.
All right, that are currently stored outside. Excellent, good. And it, it's, it's higher than like, so.
Very high.
Yeah, so the last time you got flooded down there, so many sanitation trucks got flooded, right?
Yeah, but those were the ones that were at street level.
Okay, let's go back to the old business and see what we haven't done yet. L. L, a professional service agreement to provide engineering and service for uh Olsted Avenue Safety Improvements.
Uh we just got the authorization from the state D O P to proceed to preliminary design. Uh what we've attached is an agreement with uh H P E A. Uh they were the, ended up we selected to uh provide the professional engineering design services. Awesome. This allows us to spend money and get reimbursed.
Have I filed that?
Yep.
Yes. Getting reimbursed always sounds good. Uh let's go to one H, uh resuming village operation thousand choice, without you for, Jerry, you, you put this on?
In there. Several years ago, as you remember, um started monitoring the um. Construction of affordable units amongst market rate units. Um we have a couple of builders who have either completed their project or very close to completing their project. Who have been trying to get the town to get um individuals who qualify for the affordable units. And because of the, some shipping in town personnel, um loss of town uh employee. Uh they have not been able to do so. And so I think it's best if um we take it over so that we can handle. The administration of that, we don't necessarily choose the individual that's done by a third party. But they are vetted by a third party and then they're chosen through a lottery system by a third party, but we would be administering that just to make sure that it's gone. The way it's supposed to, because right now his ground will halt.
No.
Because of some changes that the town.
Well, I was trusted in the board when we, we had a housing person. Right. And we dissolved that and let the town uh take it over because it was, it was saving. Uh part-time salary. Would you anticipate that this would, this change that you're uh asking for would uh cause us to hire another person?
No.
Your office?
And, and how many, um, how many units are we talking about, uh, uh, the trap, what kind of traffic are you, in other words, how many would you be?
Right now I have a problem with three.
Cuz what it also is, it's a responsibility for HUD vouchers too.
This is a fairly minor thing.
No, it's not.
No, it's not one thing.
Oh, you said these are three, three units?
Now that I have to place people in within the HUD vouchers or.
HUD vouchers are large.
Yes.
How many we talked?
Um I'd have to check, I don't know. Right now I'm just trying to get past the putting people in these um affordable units.
What was the agreement? I mean, there was an agreement with the town, or I think that there was some funding that went to the town, so what's the agreement with the town? Because.
There was, there's a chunk of change that went.
Right, so I mean, is, is it something that we can extricate ourselves from and can this, can we really handle the HUD vouchers as well?
We can handle, we can handle the vouchers, we can handle the placement within my office, there's no problem with that. We have the time and we have the ability to do that. I think the agreement, um if we continue with the town, uh we will continue to have apartments long-term unoccupied. I think they're handling the HUD vouchers, that's the reason why I don't think they can get around to giving the placements, because those HUD vouchers have to be done. Anyways.
Do we have any, you know, information from the town about why this hasn't happened?
They lost, they lost a longtime employee who was handling.
Yeah.
Without, without redundancy in the operation, there wasn't anyone else who handled it.
So what are they doing about there? I mean, they've just built a new complex, they obviously have to.
What complex?
Yeah, I mean, the town, they're, they're, I mean, they're, it's, it's not as if they can keep not having a, a, an employee. I'm just thinking, you know. In this age of trying to do shared services, is there a way of figuring out how to share this service between the town and the village?
They're trying, it's just not being successful, it hasn't been successful. They are trying, it's not that they're not, it's just they're, it's not, it's not happening.
How many poles do we have in the village that could be it? I think there's gonna be a couple in the new place uh by A S A P, right?
And another one up across from here, just one.
Right across from here, and then there's an eight unit, it's supposed to be one in uh where we knocked down the house behind where we got it.
So it's potential five to six.
Two, three main empty, right now there's three empty.
Which is crazy, and we, we, they're empty and we need, we need people to fill them, we're having a hard time.
You're not having a hard time finding people, you're having a hard time making sure that.
It's a complicated process with, and it's a federally regulated process.
And I'm sure that the, the building owners aren't happy because they're not getting any rent out of their apartment.
So, yeah, this is, this, yeah, we gotta do this.
The building owners have also expressed that if they're not occupied, they feel like their future approvals are gonna be impacted negatively because they're. Fourteen units are not occupied. That's really their biggest concern right now.
See, well, what I wanna make sure is, is we have uh Mr. Spalzino uh look over the, the agreement with the town. Just to make sure that there are no landmines that we're gonna step on.
So, so this is the original discussion, I mean, this is the, this is the.
Right.
Preliminary discussion.
So can we leave this on to two weeks and Bob, can you?
But Bob's not gonna be here.
He'll be here in two weeks, but we probably need to confer about this, if this is someplace the board wants to go.
Yeah.
We'll develop a plan.
Well, it's, it's, I hear that it's someplace the board wants to examine if we should go.
Yeah.
I wanna get to the destination. Without seeing any of the uh. Marass that might lay in the way.
Also, I just wanna say, in the interim, that if the town does step up properly, then it may be, you know. It may not be an issue anymore.
Okay. But let's get to the old business and then we can move everything up, new business to next week, as we have a executive session. Uh legislation to regulate the removal of double poles. Jerry, how many double poles? This is when, so people who are watching. Uh Con Ed puts a new pole in or the telephone company puts a new pole in, they don't remove the old pole. They just leave it there to go to rot, I guess.
I got my imaginary glove on, right?
Yes.
Left hand, sorry, right, so it's a hundred and two in this village.
Hundred and two double poles.
Hundred and two double poles in this village, right? And so the reason there are zero in the village of Porchester. Is because they charge the utility company two hundred and fifty dollars per week when that pole becomes a double pole. After an accident or utility change or upgrade and transform. So there are zero in the Porchester. Because it's two fifty per week is what their uh coordinate says.
So what else, they're just, without charging them, so they just live there?
I guess they go into Porchester when they need to, and they're, you know, we're on the pay no mind, right?
Alright, so how much should we charge them?
I'm really, really excited about what Porchester is doing right now.
He's happy with two fifty.
Right, Nora knows.
Can we, can we go back and say you have to remove the ones that you currently have?
The minute the, in my opinion, the minute this passes, they're gonna get a notice.
Bob, uh ex post facto?
Wouldn't be exposed factor if we're saying now.
It's the only Latin I know.
Come on, you went to Xavier, you gotta know more Latin than that. We, the uh, it won't be exposed. The fact that they're there doesn't mean they can stay there.
Okay, so we, we can, just because we haven't forced them to remove it before, we could force them to remove them now.
Don't think, they may put up a fight.
Twenty five thousand dollar week fight.
I guess, I guess we would have to notify them that, that it fired at some point or, yeah.
Okay. Porchester's is not more than seven fifty per day, but they.
Per day.
Per day.
It's two fifty per week, I think they had it.
But they allow it to go up a bit.
I think, yeah, I think it was for, the first was two fifty, then it was.
Twelve.
Escalating or escalating.
Second and any other.
But we wouldn't wanna escalate.
We just want.
It's like the day goes up every week.
This is a safety measure, okay, right?
It is. No, no, revenue, that's secondary.
Right, yeah, so everybody's fine with moving forward in this area?
Yes.
I mean, they really make it har- hard for the sidewalk to go through.
It, it's, it's a, it's a mess, and they're homely.
Yeah, just.
And it's something they should get to.
Yeah, they're leaving your old equipment.
There's a reason Porchester has that. There was a reason for it.
Uh, business recruitment, this is uh one J, this is.
Okay, I, I, I brought this up before that.
It's called business recruitment for the village of Mamaroneque.
Yes, okay, so, so what I would like uh us to begin to explore would be, would be a um. A mechanism, a partnership with Chamber of Commerce, perhaps the uh, the industrial, uh, the folks in the industrial zone. Uh, uh, maybe our planning uh, uh, department, uh, commission uh, uh, to. Figure out what kind of businesses we would like to have in Mamaroneque as opposed to just waiting for them to show up and then complain about it. Uh, the um, uh, there are other um, uh, communities around the country that have done this. They, uh, there are um, uh, companies that will help you find the kind of businesses you want. Um, uh, and you, you, you create a wish list and then you go, you go shop for them. Um, uh, off the top of my head, and I, you know, I'm, I'm just me, I think we could use a bookstore, an affordable supermarket. And a, and a, and a hardware store to replace brewers. Um, you know, I, I think we have enough.
Can replace.
I know, I, I, we don't need any more vape shops or banks, so they're, you know, that's, it's basically that, we have, we have vacant businesses. And, and we, you know, we wanna, we get people to come. Uh, I happen to speak to the owner of Arcade Books in, in Rye. Who was going to come to Mamaroneque and couldn't make a deal with the, with the landlord, and, and he's not happy in Rye, I'll tell you that much. So um, uh, we could, uh, we can change the nature of our, uh, of our, of our district and make it more of a, of our, especially that strip. On Mamaroneque Avenue, make it more of a, of a desirable location where, where people wanna come, rather than just wait to see what shows up. I mean, when, every time I make a turn and I see the, the lovely church that's there, it's, it's, they did a nice job with it, but that was vacant for a long time. I don't think anybody. Checked to see who might want that, uh, might have wanted to come there, I mean. Yeah, I'm thinking an, an Apple Store would have been great, you know, I mean, something, you, you can.
I was talked about, actually.
Yeah, we can make this community a destination, uh, uh, if we, we proactively look for the things we want to look for.
Well, how do we incentivize people?
Um, but tell them that we, we want them here.
This is like very aspirational.
Yes.
That the first thing to do is to get a, a, you know, a group of stakeholders, it's not just the village, but it's the other people that you mentioned. And um, you know, sometimes it's called the Business Improvement District.
Yes.
It's a, it's a, it's a very good way to, um, because sometimes you can use a revolving fund, sometimes you can have a, um. You know, like a small business incubator, but I think it really, it's not, it's not just the role of government, it's the role of. Government, Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, exactly.
Whether or not they're, they live here or.
And they can come to, I mean, if there's an incentive we can provide, then they can, then they can say, listen, this guy wants to come, but can you, can you help out with parking? Can you help out with this? Can you help out with that? Um, uh, and, and we can consider it, but if we don't make the effort. We can't complain when another vape shop opens up, you know.
Are we, are we allowed to prioritize businesses that we want to see? Cuz I feel like we, if you look at Mamaroneque now, you have so many multiples of the same kind of business. Are we allowed to say like, you know, we wanna put a halt on barber shops and salons and while we're doing, while you're pushing this initiative of recruiting, like, I just think. There's so many things of the same kind of business that open up in the app, are we allowed to say no more of X and, and forward?
I don't know about no more, but I can say you've got a vacant storefront, wh- wh- uh, uh, what, what are you doing with it? And, and the landlord might just shrug, and we say, well, well, we've got a bookstore that wants to move in here, you wanna talk to him. And, and, and we're really interested in having that bookstore come, you know, so we encourage you to talk to him, that kind of thing.
So we, it would be more of us kind of push to her to encourage, you know, certain businesses, cuz I just feel like we, yeah, I, which I agree, cuz I think there's a lot of stuff on. Home American app, there's too many of the same thing, it's, it's kind of, and just, it's just, it doesn't help the business owners, like, why would you wanna? Open a barber shop here and there's four on the app, why would you wanna, it just doesn't make.
And there's, there's storefronts that have been vacant for, for years.
Yeah, I just, we should. You know, encourage you in different things, like.
It's, it's partly identi- identifying what the inventory is, what the demand is, what, and, and how. This location satisfies that demand, and that's how you market it to the people who are in that business, saying, you know, we know A, B, C, D, and A and.
The backup material, I forgot, uh, I provided, was from the University of uh Wisconsin. And uh, you know, and there are, there are small cities and villages like us that do this, and I, I think what we simply do is contact. The board of, uh, you know, pass the resolution that we'd like to do this, um, uh, contact the, the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, um, uh, request that the planning commission look at it and say, hey, what, what do you think? Where, where would, where? Where, maybe we should have a, a district, you know, prioritize uh, uh, Mamaroneque Avenue, uh, maybe we should do something for the, for the hot, you know, that kind of thing.
I think, yeah, I think the Chamber of Commerce is a good place to start, I think you also have to look at uh, the building owners. Because that, that's a separate entity a lot of times from the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
Because i- i- if they don't wanna rent the place, you know, it, it's uh, it, the Chamber of Commerce is not. You know, the Chamber of Commerce is a separate entity from the building owners. I think you should contact, you know, as many landlords as you can, and, and I think you should spearhead this. Uh, and, and I think, you know, I think many of the landlords, cuz you're, you're not gonna get anywhere if you don't have buy-in from. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce, and uh, you know, I, I, I think uh, a, a few people who are uh, longtime residents who are. Interested in America and we worked to better Mamaroneque Avenue, I think uh, Sunny Goldberg, did you know Sunny?
Yeah.
Sunny Goldberg uh worked for years and years to beautify Mamaroneque Avenue, she was uh kinda. The godmother of uh getting the uh village to bury those lines and, you know, and all that in the late nineties. Uh, so, you know, I, I think you're, I think you're on a good path, but it, it's, it's a tough road to hoe.
Uh, well, I, I mean, if, if the board takes the official stance that we would like to find out, we'd like to do a survey. Uh, of, of vacant businesses in our business districts, we'd like to begin to prioritize, we'd like to begin to make a list of desirable. Uh, um, uh, businesses that we'd like to, that, that we want to come to the village and, and begin an outreach program. If the, if the, if the board takes that, that uh, uh, that resolution, refers it to the appropriate uh, uh, entities. I would be happy to, to jump in, but I think it, it has to be an official uh village policy.
I, I don't think this board should right now say what kind of businesses.
No, no, say that we want to, we want to find out, what, we want to find out what the priorities for recruiting desirable businesses to, uh, to our, our. No, no, say that we want to, we want to find out, we want to find out what the priorities for recruiting desirable businesses to, uh, to our downtown.
Well, do, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. Who's gonna do the resolution?
Uh, I'll, I'll write it up and I'll.
Work with him.
I'll write it up with Dan and, and we'll, we'll have it ready in two weeks. With, with Dan, Dan's like, I don't need this. Yeah, you gotta.
It'll start, whereas the village of America was incorporated eighteen ninety-five.
I can never, I can never, you know, copy your, your beautiful proposition.
So then, I guess I'll set up an appointment with you and we'll, and we'll sit down and talk, discuss this.
Is everybody fine with that? Are you all right with that?
We have to really make sure that they're, they're non-governmental stakeholders.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that that's the only way it works.
Yeah, it's, it, yeah.
I have two questions. I, I think that the judges are probably here for C. And the poetry garden, um, this, they're gonna need approval. They're trying to get this signed up by April, so if we wait too long.
All right, let, let's just do poetry garden, then we got, we got a break for.
Exactly, and also the, um, this is resolution, this, um, year resolution.
No, that, that's, 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 that's a correction.
All right, thank.
All right, so. They just, it, it's, they, they had the wrong name.
Good job.
So what are we doing now?
The poetry garden, um, which is a little garden right out here, um, has a, basically a spot where nothing grows. So the, the staff has really tried to, I think they've done two plants, two sets of plantings and nothing is growing. So, um, the Cox family who, who really donated most of the plantings and, and one of the sculptures um, has offered to donate a sculpture that says poetry, which would sort of be a little bit of a buffer between the police parking area and be located in the place where, where no one can get anything to grow. And um, they, they're gonna pay for three quarters of it and the Arts Council's going to use their reserve fund for the rest of it, but they just need permission. So there's a, there's a photograph that has the, um, the lo- the location of the fence behind the tortoise. It can, it's just sort of orange. It's not a fence. It's, I mean, I think actually the, the sculpture will kind of look, it won't look like a fence, but it'll, it'll be a little bit of a barrier between the park. It'll, it'll define the park. And um, the, the wording, the, the, the shape and size of the letters is down below. It's forty-eight inches high by about thirteen and a half feet wide.
Okay, alright.
We need to put it on like for the next, you know, for two weeks.
Yeah, sure. Have we got a problem with that?
Poetry gardens? Pretty non-controversial.
Well, Mary Louise Cox was also an icon in the community.
Okay.
Anything else that's been on, uh, old, this new business will become old business and be taken first next week.
Oh, thanks, it's weeks.
Oh, with that late?
Yeah.
Because of you, Lou.
Alright, we have three items on executive session. Appointment of member, I, I, I'm gonna make these motions, all at one point. Appointment of member of the committee to the environment is anticipated that a motion will be offered to executive session, one oh five, one F of the New York State Public Office. Uh, village prosecutor, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh one F to discuss the medical, financial, credit, this is a particular person, it's about hiring a village prosecutor. Uh, village manager contract renewal, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit and employment history of a particular person, persons of corporations, yadda, yadda. Alright, I make all three of those motions.
Someone second. Oh, you didn't make, so he, so you second.
Trusty Rollins?
Yes.
But the guys who read?
Yes.
The young?
Yes.
Trusty Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. We don't have pumps or not?
Nothing tonight.
Not, not, well, I mean, he can come. They're already talking about it. I, I wanted, I just want to bring it up and refer, like, I mean, I don't, we should. Yeah, I want to bring it up and refer to them, but they're already talking about it, so, so I don't.
Mayor, there's no audio.
Okay, L M C, there's reports that there's no audio.
Yeah.
Done. Okay, Sally, can you hear us now?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. What is that feedback? Oh, Sally, it's a very fun time. Okay. We open the meeting, there's emergency exits to my right, emergency exits to my left. Please use them in the event of emergency, walk out calmly. Please mute your cell phones. And we open the meeting, first item, let me just preface this, I know there's a lot of people here for one particular issue in public hearing, the first item on the agenda is communication to the board. Communication to the board has a limit of five minutes. Public hearing. There's really no limit, but I'd ask everybody to just be mindful that there are other people waiting and willing to speak, so use your own judgment. So, anybody want to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda? Tim.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tim O'Connor, Washington, section of America. I'm going to speak on behalf of myself, private citizen, Tim O'Connor. I give myself as a member of the park's recognition.
Thanks.
Well, what's going on, I've got three things I want to talk about. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I had a little discussion with Son this morning about it. Life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. We don't have that in Washington, unfortunately, people. But we just don't have life, liberty, pursuit of happiness at all. And how you work, my mission is here right now. Pursuit of happiness, well, let's start with the parallel flood planning. Has that been done yet? Do we have a parallel flood mitigation plan yet? Yes, no?
Jerry, where are we with? Let me ask, where are we with the dredging?
The dredging plan. According to our site visit with the Army Corps and the state is that they provide us with a modified dredging plan to remove the larger material in the, in the river. Which includes river rock and sand. Not necessarily going deep into the, into the rivers to remove areas. We're limited to 200 feet on either side of brigades. And we're limited to 100 foot at a time. To dredge areas that are not within the 200 feet. All those things have been worked out as such last week. We permitted, we, we had our consultant fill out the general permit so that we can have that, those provisions and work on those provisions. And I was promised by the vendor, because we purchased and estimated to do it ourselves, that we'd have to piece of equipment today, but I haven't heard back from them today. But I knew that bucket, which is the final piece. Then that was supposed to come in, did come in on Friday. I'm not sure why, I haven't been able to follow up on.
So, I think the answer is it's going to be happening post haste.
It's going to be happening post haste, but there's also ongoing discussions with Romanford. And the Army Corps is going to be in the village on Wednesday night. We're going to be discussing the plan in front of the I A B C, which is the Industrial Advisory Business Coalition, or whatever they call themselves. So they'll be here discussing. They may or may not disclose that they have 90, 90% plan, they're going to present this village board in July of this year for the doubling of the span of Sward Avenue Bridge from 45 to 85 feet. And their elimination of whatever.
Right, great, so there is a plan, which is awesome. It's just that, I can't when you create a document like a Microsoft project, put that on the link. That way you have start dates, end dates, milestones, completion.
So that's on me, I promised that, I promised that to W N A and others. And because I've been trying to deal with negotiating with these agencies and other things. I haven't had time to put that together, I know our engineer Gino has started that. But I'll promise the board, Tim, that I'll have that to them for February 27th. And then they can decide whether they want to put it on the work session for distribution or not.
Great, because it, it's, I don't see it's a waste of time, everybody's busy, right? And so it'd be great to have a document, a liberty document, point and click. Information's there, the book's there, anybody could grab it. I understood a lot of people out there that don't have the electronics. Maybe just go by and pick up a copy too. You know, we've got the greatest generation of folks still living with us, thankfully. But that's sort of the thing that we like to see, because it's easy to you know, point and click on a link and get some information versus wasting your guys' time trying to get information from these, you know, these meetings, but okay, great.
I, I agree with that, I agree, it is, it is a little bit of a you know, time consuming to have individuals come up here. So, so Tim, what I envisioned was an Excel spreadsheet with some information on it, but also where I am and maybe updated every couple of weeks, every month. Of where potentially the Army Corps is and all of those things, as I get updates, I update it before. I could easily, you know, work on that, we provide that to you.
Great, I appreciate that, and that's the part of where I'm looking tonight for is the pursuit of happiness, you know, we've got the flood issues. We have our meetings, you know, the, the VA, you know, in our neighborhoods there, and we have residents that come down. And they have PTSD. I have it too, and so that's the effect of the aftercome of violence. And so that's that, you know, who wants to go through that? That's not the pursuit of happiness that is outlined in the Declaration of Independence. We don't have that, and it's not fair that all of us, when it's a rainstorm like it was two weeks ago, it was an inch and a half of rain. It's been 24 hours, it all affects me, you know. Hey, turn on your pumps, let's get ready. And it's like, let's man the battle stations every time it rains. And then we have to go through the whole Simus of go through the whole rainstorm, check the drains, check everything, the sub pumps, and then go to work the next day. So there are folks out there that are going through this P, PTSD issue, let you guys know that. What else? Life, right, part of life, liberty, pursuit of happiness. I sent this board a few emails back on January 9th, 20, 2023, February 10th of last week. We came to the board here at 9:72, and George Latimer sat around over there. We spoke about, in 10:11 as well, and sent several documents on behalf of Washington Neighborhood Association. I think it was four in total. One of which was part of the cell phone tower concern. And I didn't receive anything from the board about the cancer causing issue that we have in our neighborhood. Nothing, I didn't get, I didn't get even a reply back. I didn't get focus, I didn't get anything other than crickets. And some, just to let you guys know from our resident is that we do have an issue of some source of cancer in our neighborhood. And my wife was affected. And she, half of her thyroid is gone. And so we have residents in our neighborhood, I don't know if you guys know this, around Plaza.
Yeah.
Okay, there is a cancer causing issue out there that's affecting thyroid, we know of ten or more people that have this issue. My wife, as well as my neighbors, have went through surgery to remove a thyroid. Now, if you're lucky, you can have the thyroid removed. If you're not that lucky, you're on medication for the rest of your life, and what for? Is that the end result of being a good citizen? Paying your taxes, hard working, all of a sudden you gotta go through life with a thyroid because in your neighborhood you may have an issue? I don't understand what it's worth sitting on. It's not, it's not right. Vladimir, Mr. Vladimir said right there, 9:72 after I went up here for about 10 minutes, went on the tire read. And all he said was, if you need help, please call me. Have you guys called George Latimer?
We, we referred the discussions that we had with Mr. Latimer, and the health, Village doesn't have a health department. We don't, yeah, county has the health department. So, you know, these issues have been referred down, but I can tell you this, Tim. I, I sent an email to your organization about the transfer station no longer taking food scraps.
That's from the county, though, right?
No, but the reason that that got shut down was because the county was able to say that this is, you know, in, in, in a, an economically depressed area that was, you know, impacted adversely by environmental conditions. So I'm just saying, because of the advocacy, and I said this to Reba, because the advocacy that you guys had. This was the first step, you know, they would have been dumping garbage there in perpetuity if we hadn't made noise about that.
But that's one variable I have a lot of, you had
Tim, I know.
Blood brothers over there with masons on, you got the old chimney, the, the, the generator. God knows only what they burned over there. Around the corner, 100 feet from the Shell Tech, you got the Con Edison substation over there. You know, what, what they did over the years with the transportation, who knows? We've been affected with three floods in the last 60 years. Water needs to be tested, soil needs to be tested, the source needs to we need to look at where the source is coming from. You can't tell me that over 10 people have thyroid cancer and that's just the coincidence. Hell, no, I can't live that on my watch. So here's the deal now, we need communication back from your board, letting, letting the residents know. Because I think it's only fair as taxpayers that we pay you our taxes for our service to keep us healthy, to keep us safe. And we need that information back so we can actually disseminate that information to our organization monthly. Right now, we don't have any information. If you're working on something with the county, please involve us, update us, it's only fair. And I'll tell you right off the bat, you know, it's, it's not right for all these people go in life with a thyroid issue, and if we're sitting on it and we're not being proactive on it. We're all going to suffer, and that's the pursuit of happiness that we're not getting. All right, that's all I have right now, I appreciate it, as well as thanks for your time.
Yeah, I just want to I, I just want to point out something that Tim talked about, that the community should know. Couple weeks ago, Jerry trustee Young or village engineer. That was it, right, that went up to, went, went up to New Falls to meet with the D E C. That's the Department of Biobоль and Conservation, the Department of State, and the Army Corps of Engineers. There's been, you know, unfounded accusations on, you know, some of the websites about this being an illegal meeting, and it wasn't. Lonnie listened in on the phone, she wasn't there. I zoomed in, and I was the only village official to speak, and the only thing I talked about is I talked about the PTSD. I talked about what has been happening to our community. I talked about, you know, how unfair it is that they're worried about our dredging affecting other communities when they sat there for 125 years and let those two rivers become the storm repositories for White Plains, for Harrison, for Scarsdale, for the town of Maranick. And I tried my best, and I, and I, you know, and I, I think I, I did an okay job of conveying how unfair it is and how important it is for this village to do parallel. Because, you know, the Army Corps was, you know, worried about, you know, us stepping on their toes, and I'm saying, you know, we want to do stuff that's not in the area that you're, you know, affecting, and we're doing it with our own money. And you're, you're worried about how it's going to affect somebody up in Scarsdale, which is uphill. It makes no sense, this is just common sense. And what, what happened, what came out of that is that the person from the Army Corps is new, they'd never seen our rivers. And the D E C came down, and the Army Corps came down, and they, you know, they investigated our rivers, because, you know, the guy from the Army Corps, you know, he was acting like this was a stream that was going through a virgin forest. Yeah. And that, you know, it, it had never been altered before, but, you know, and I, I impressed upon it, all these streams and rivers are channelized, and none of them are in their natural condition. And I think that that, Jerry, I think that had, that had the visits and our advocacy had a, an effect.
Yep. The visits were they needed to confirm what you were saying, and they confirmed.
And, and, and the message they got from Tom and from me was that we're not going to wait for the Army Corps, Army Corps villages, we're not waiting around. And we, we're going to, we're going to start, you need to help us start now, we're not, we're not filling out paperwork, we're not doing studies, we're going to get, we want to get to work now, it's an emergency now, and I, and I mentioned the very thing, every time it rains people are, people are, are, their stomachs are in a knot. I hear you, Tim, I, I, I share your frustration. I, I hope it's enough, but we're doing, doing the best we can, we really are.
So, I'll, I'll add to, in regards to the wireless towers, there's something that I brought up today in terms of how the wireless towers could affect our environment. And as our village attorney stated, this is something beyond our local level, is something that we have to bring to, you know, to state, to federal. And we, some, some of us do have good working relations with our state and, and federal legislators, so that's something that I personally am very interested in, because I understand, I'm I don't want, I, I don't, the pursuit of life, liberty, and, and what? Happiness, is very important to each and every one of us. And happiness is very important to each and every one of us. And I don't want any of us to be affected by something that, if we can prevent, prevent or fix. I can't, I can't stop something that um or I can't tear down something that is already here. I mean, I possibly could, I don't know. We don't know that yet. Um I could fix what is has been here. I can't go back in time and I apologize for that. And I also will personally, myself, would apologize for not responding in the time that I've been in a seat to your your emails. But it's not, and I also even spoke to Jerry or somebody, I don't know, about um testing our our soil. Cause I I personally think that there's something in our soil that isn't, is not beneficial to our residents. So, thank you.
Robert Stark, seven oh four Palmer Court, I'm on the traffic commission, I'm not talking that topic. Two things I wanna talk about. One, first time I was here uh at the last flight committee meeting when you announced the DC letter, you came down, you responded immediately and and arranged to contact your property official. Thank you. Good job. Um, my issue is that now I hear that there's a meeting on Wednesday that the Army Corps is coming here. So I have several questions. Are the trustees aware that the Army Corps was coming? I haven't finished it.
I know. No, 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 I was, I was recently, I I will be there, but go ahead.
So, so you're aware of it. So my question is, my question, second thing is, I was at the December meeting of the Flood Mitigation Committee, and the first thing that they said is that their goal was to provide transparency and information to the residents. Uh regarding what's happening with the Army Corps. The fact that the Army Corps people are gonna be there on Wednesday to answer questions, has the, have the flood, has the Flood Mitigation Committee been advised of that? Do they plan on attending? Have you provided uh information to the residents, providing this? I think this is significant, and I'm happy to hear it. And so that's my, that's my, that's my question.
Who's the Army Corps gonna be addressing? That the uh?
Industrials.
It's a private group, I'm not even going.
But the also the uh.
And dispatch, it's part of that group, it's under the Flight Committee has.
And the um, and I believe Tony will be there as well.
Yeah, it's their meeting, it's not our meeting.
Understand, but the fact that the Army Corps is coming here, I think is that would people love to know that because it's it's, I think it's a great thing. And positive information, I think we're all happy to hear that, but we need to hear. And following up on what Tim said, he was asking for information. And I don't think we would heard about that meeting. I wanna say, had Tim not come up here and said, what's happening? That's, that's my issue.
Just, just let me reiterate, it's not our meeting, it's not a public meeting.
But it's information that.
And the Army Corps is here all the time too. I mean, they they come and 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 check the sites.
There, it's on the agenda. Which is under my report.
It's on your, okay, okay, thank you. Anybody else?
To to a couple of, I just wanna say that um I think that I'm glad that we're gonna have a a document. Jerry is doing a flood mitigation report today. Cause we decided three weeks ago we needed one, and I asked him to, and he, he'll be reporting on flood mitigation regularly at meetings, which is good for the public, but I I wouldn't ever discourage anybody from coming and speaking, because no matter what we do right or what we do wrong, people should, well, we keep coming and telling us that.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is gonna be a public hearing. Uh PLLB twenty twenty three Terms of Office of the Mayor and the Trustees of the Village of America. Now, before I ask for motion uh to open the meeting, uh open a hearing, rather, I just wanna make a couple of clarifications. I think that there's a consensus that we've been hearing from the community uh that a referendum uh on this issue uh would be the appropriate way to go. And I think that 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 there's a lot of arguments that have been made, that have been uh inaccurate, but I think that that is a fair uh position to take. Uh, you know, we proposed this law last year, and we proposed it with a referendum. And the uh previous board, uh we couldn't get three votes to do it. Uh, so then there was an election and three trustees who sit here uh ran on this issue and they won. Uh, and, you know, it it's, for me, uh who have been, who has been uh on and off this board, on the Town of Amerik Board, uh pretty much uh for the past twenty two, twenty three years. Uh, and having served in a community like the Town of Amerik, where the term was four years. And having served in a community like the Village of Amerik, where the term is two years, and there is a contested election every year. Uh, it is a different uh atmosphere. Uh, it it is, you know, in my opinion, it takes more than uh two years to adequately get up to speed and to really get into your game. Uh, I think uh that's part of it. And but also, uh for someone who's been involved in electoral politics all that time, uh, for a community like this to go through, uh what we have in this place is a very competitive, uh sometimes boisterous elections. Uh, to have to do that every year and restart it every year, doesn't give the community the time to settle and the time to heal. This is just my opinion. Uh, and but it's it's an opinion informed by long, long service in this community. Um, so I I just wanna assure people that I think that, you know, you're gonna see a uh a a consensus to have a a vote. And if it goes up or it goes down, you know, that that's, that's fine. It's all the same to me. Uh, and it's all the same to all of us. But, you know, I think it's a good idea. But it's a major change and change is hard. And uh nobody likes to uh, you know, the change we often project negatively. Uh, and, you know, it's it's, this is happening quickly and I understand that, but this is a board that is gonna get a lot of stuff done. Uh, we're not gonna let things languish and uh let progress uh be impeded forever. But when somebody makes a good and valid point, I think we should respond to that good and valid point and be able to uh tack to a different uh course when necessary. So I just wanted to set up the that before we begin so that uh people, yeah, and and a- as, I just wanna point out, at no point was any member of the board up here's term that we are currently in going to be extended. If this was going to get passed, uh I would be running for reelection at the end of the year for a longer term. Uh, the other three trustees uh would be running next year at the end of their current two-year term. So you would have another chance to decide about whether you wanted them or not. Uh, but I'm fine with doing a two-year term to it. Uh, so that being said, I need to, you wanna say?
Real quickly, I wanted to clear, cause since this was my initiative to bring it forward, it's the reason it's it's here. I wanted to just say this is a moment, uh uh, this, the fact that we're discussing this issue, a moment of pride for the students who brought it to our attention, the students from Amerik High School, which is why uh it, why I I picked up the uh the mantle on it. It was brought to my attention by uh Elsa Rubin, who was a a uh district leader back then. When I first got on the board, first thing, looked at it and 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 I said, that's great, brought it on, and and the the rest is uh is a history, I guess. Um, what we have before us uh tonight is is the law that was dr- uh written up last year. Came right off the shelf. I asked Bob about it, he says, I got it. And that's what, that's what it is. So that, so that, that's it. It it is attached uh to a a four-year staggered term. But the point of it is to eliminate off-year elections and to maximize turnout. That's the point. It's the only thing I care about. Um, and uh the the, excuse me. So this is the only thing I care about. The very uh measure came up last year. It was attached to a mandatory referendum. And I thought that would have been gr- great, and I I, we agreed to do that to get it passed. But the people at the time who were against this had enough votes to kill it, they killed it. They killed the measure, they killed the the referendum last year, all right? So this board, if it has a referendum, will take a different tack. I would hope that we would get a unanimous uh uh vote on a referendum this time around. Um, the uh vote, uh um if this does pass as written, if it were to pass tonight, there would be an opportunity for a referendum, but it would be a heavy lift and probably not not possible for the opponents to uh to mount a successful challenge. I understand that. I think the 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 um the uh law probably needs um probably needs work and it needs to go back to a a work session. That's likely what will happen. And if it does go to a referendum at that point, I think it'll be good to have the referendum in June, when the students are back from um from college and they can help us uh uh help us uh sell the program. And uh anybody who doesn't like it can look them in the eye and tell them to go away. All right, so that's uh, that's it. Also, I wanna clear up, I erroneously said that the League of Women Voters is behind this. It was my mistake. Um, I got the impression because I had been to League of Women Voters meetings where I discussed it with individuals who are very enthusiastic about the idea of uh of these uh biannual elections sync to the federal schedule. Uh, the League of Women Voters does not have a position on this. It was my mistake. I said it enough times that Tom repeated it. I just wanna make that clear. I apologize to the League of Women Voters, and I look forward to hearing your comments.
Shows you how impressionable I am.
Yeah, sorry about that. I've made mistakes before, I think more than one.
Uh, I'd like a motion to open the vote, Jerry. Hold the roll. Christie is rolling.
Yes.
Liza Reed. Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
The microphone is open for the public. Okay, first of all, let's let's set some grounds. Anybody has anything to say, get to the microphone, right, and ask the question. We 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 don't yell out, people at home can't hear. The question was, what is a referendum? A referendum is a vote that is taken uh upon an issue uh by the whole electorate. It's not a vote just of the Board of Trustees, but a Board of Trustees has to authorize. In in this instance, there were, there are two paths to a referendum. The one path would be uh twenty percent of all registered voters would have to sign a petition to force a ballot initiative. That's one. That that, but we are truthfully, uh I I don't think, although there's a lot of people making a lot of noise, I don't think they were doing work to get the twenty percent. Uh, so what we're doing here tonight is we're short, you know, if if we do this, we would be short circuiting that and saying, we as a board are gonna make it a referendum. And the voters can then vote on it. And if the voters vote no, the law doesn't pass. The voters vote yes, the law passes. We have to pass the law first, right? And it's called a permissive referendum. And then the voters give permission to that referendum. I hope that is, if anybody wants to talk, please go to the mic.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, so the law that we have before us tonight is for a permissive referendum, which means anybody who will put, it it will become law within, I guess, thirty days unless residents get paper petitions signed to the number of twenty four hundred saying they want to push for a permissive referendum, which would be scheduled sometime between, you know, fifteen and seventy days after March fifteenth. Um, we don't have, we have the opportunity to require a referendum when we adopt this law, but it needs to be in the law. So that's not what we're, we're not voting on that tonight. And if we were gonna change the law to include that, I, the village attorney would, could opine, but it's a significant enough change that it ha- the public hearing has to be renoted. So right now, what we're discussing, the law we're discussing and voting on would be to change, change the law to have four-year terms beginning with this next set of mayor and trustee race in November, three years. Then on the twenties, the twenty uh twenty twenty six, it'll be four years. And then next year, there would be four-year terms. And it would, oh, it would be law unless two, twenty four hundred people signed, twenty four hundred registered voters signed a petition asking for a permissive referendum, in which case the village would have So that's what's before us now. Um, we could, we could. I think it it sounds like, it's, you don't understand. Okay, so it's.
Stop, please. I'm gonna ask you, please not to do this from the audience.
All right, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try one more time. I worked with the students and I, and and I think the students' request had been to have, uh to tie this to a referendum. Some laws in New York State require a referendum, that's a mandatory referendum. Changing the term and changing the length of the term and changing the the year of an election does not require a referendum. It's a permissive referendum, which requires twenty percent of voters to sign petitions asking for that.
Or or if we pass a law, in the law, it it provides for.
A referendum, right. So right now, what we're voting on tonight is um to adopt this, these two changes to our law without any referendum, putting the onus on the residents to push for a referendum. Sounds to me that other members of the board have been persuaded that a referendum i- is a, is a good idea. Um, but that, that's not what is before us tonight. So I think that the same kind of topics of conversation, we got a lot of emails. Um, it, and I I would say all of the emails that we got asked for a referendum. Some people were in favor, some people were opposed, some people were unclear as to what the merits or demerits of this would be. But universally, people thought it needed to be decided by the voters, not by the five trustees.
All right, Mr. Liberty.
Our civics professor can clarify.
I'm not gonna correct that, that's, the other thing you're saying is accordingly accurate. So um let me just say, my name is Joe Liberty. Uh, I'm a social studies teacher at Anurnak High School. Uh, I'm actually here tonight um on behalf of the students uh who did the research, crafted the proposal. And they are currently enrolled in college. They drafted the public comments and asked that I come tonight and read them into the record. Uh, so the students are Daniel Marsh, Jackson Owen, Justin Solis, and Delia Sutton. We'd like to thank the mayor and the Village of Amerik Board of Trustees for advancing our proposal to align local elections with the federal schedule, which our research shows better reflects the diversity of the entire village. After three years of activism and two failed attempts at getting the board to consider a proposal, we cannot describe how thankful we are for our mentors and the community stakeholders who've aided us in our journey through this process and allowed to get to this point. Please know that our proposal comes from a genuine desire, a genuine desire to advance democracy and elevate all voices and all votes. Alani local elections will increase voter turnout, make community engagement easier for voters, and broaden minority participation in our local democracy. It's not just our data that supports these conclusions, academic studies, nation-wide examples prove a simplifying election opens the door to our public engagement. Even setting aside these empirics, our proposal makes logical sense. Decreasing the frequency of elections and increasing their importance provides incentives for voters to make informed choices across all levels of government and actually turn out to vote. The current layout of local elections does not truly represent the voices of all village residents. With less than half of registered voters are participating in all cycle local elections on average, when people are unable to name their elected officials and when many races go in contest, it's time for change. Regardless of the political rankings at the moment, our proposal represents a first step towards creating a new system based on robust community participation and informed political discourse. We hope that the board views forward with our proposal, but consider defiling changes in work session. One, clarify that only newly elected officials will see a change in length of term. Two, some lengths of terms will initially need to be less than four years in order to align elections with the federal schedule. And three, that the voters are given a chance to approve of this local law directly through referendum. Students, thank you for your time and your consideration. And thank you for hearing my comments.
Hi, I'm Catherine Miller. I live at five twenty eight Monroe Avenue in the Marion Village. Um, well, I'm disturbed at this notion of such a big change. Um, and I don't really quite see why. I do like the idea of, I think there are a lot of different issues here. So one issue has to do with presidential elections bringing greater turnout. That's true. I certainly think we should have voting for trustees on presidential election years. I also think that they should not be staggered, only because. I also think that they should not be staggered. If only because things have staggered. That every, every two-year plan means there's a perpetual campaign going on, which people have said. I don't think we need a perpetual campaign, but I don't think there's any particular logic. To say, oh, so therefore we must go every four years. I'm really against that four-year term for trustees. So I think we should have elections on presidential years. Yes, bring up the turnout. And we could also have them when Congress is elected two years later, so that there would be a two-year term. And no staggering. And I don't think it's such a problem, you know, with um continuity on the board. It's a very unlikely case that five new trustees are elected. I think we can manage. They'll hang out when you got, you know. With the previous. Congress can manage this possible thing, right? So I do think that two years is, you know, a very good system. I want to continue with a two-year system. But I would like to see it modified so there's no staggering. And um so that it always takes place in these years when people will come to the polls.
So just so we understand the suggestion. So all five members every even number of years?
Yes.
Okay, it's synchronized to your terms. Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, you better agree with the previous speaker.
No worries there. My name is Mark Thompson, also of five twenty eight Monroe Avenue. First of all, before I say anything, I just wanna let you know I'm very happy with the current Board of Trustees. And I think as long as you're on the ballot every two years or every four years. However. I've lived here for twenty-three and a half years, and there have been times where I've not been exactly in love with the people who have occupied your seats. And it was during these times where. I was really looking forward to the next election when I could cast a ballot. And hopefully affect some change in the makeup of the Board of Trustees. Now, I remember what this room was like sixteen, eighteen years ago.
Yeah, me too.
I know you did. You were there. You know, and you know, with the whole day labor thing was raging on, the various pitch battles over. Development projects that were being literally contested. Um, things got really ugly here. And. Those issues were one thing, but I remember some of your predecessors said things that were downright shocking. I mean, literally along the line of. In fact, one individual who was on the board said something that was so shocking it made the national news. And, well, that guy was eventually voted out, you know? And the reason why I mention all this is because I remember while this was all going on. I was sitting over there as a voter and a concerned citizen and thinking. This is not a situation I want going on for an extended period of time, let alone four years. Um, you know, I wanted to change it. I wanted to change, you know, pronto. And eventually it happened. I mean, um. The the makeup of the Board of Trustees eventually changed. Um, it was messy. There were setbacks. Uh, but eventually we got to where we are now. And I think it's because of the current system that we have. Um. I see this change as as potentially a double-edged sword. Um, I do agree with um. A lot of Tom's arguments, but I also. Am concerned about what might happen um in terms of unintended consequences. You know, you don't want to be stuck with somebody who embarrasses the village. And we did have people who embarrassed the village. And I don't want to see that happen again. I am not worried about. This is more embarrassing to do it, not at all. I'm talking about years down the road when there's a different group of people running the show. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
So I'll put it down, but what, synchronized to your terms? Um, is it right?
Necessarily say that.
All right, well, was that?
If we're gonna go with this sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Someone's glasses.
Hillary, is that you?
It's not, this is me. Yeah, this. Um, just before I came here, I I wrote something out, but I went on to the Mamaronek Observer. And I read that um. That Nora had actually um proposed. I agree with Nora. This is true, what I read. I agree with Nora that there should be a referendum on the twenty twenty-three ballot and that the law should be. The law be changed to take effect in twenty twenty-four if the voters choose four-year elections. Whoever is elected this year should only serve two years. Um, what I read on the Mamaronek Observer was that. Um, nobody else voted for that. Um, I don't know if that's true, because it's not a real newspaper, but. I, I do agree with Nora in what, in what she's in in that.
That was correct.
And I feel very strongly about.
How did that come up?
It was at the last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Um, when we scheduled this public hearing.
Okay, but last year you had an opportunity to vote for.
I'm not talking about last year.
Yeah, but they they neglected to talk about what happened last year.
I'll tell, I'll be happy to say what I.
Nora said that, and I agree with Nora, that's what I'm saying. And I think she's absolutely right.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody should run more than a two-year term right now until the voters have decided. And I think the voters should decide in November. I don't think, I don't know what a referendum and. No one, everyone's very confused. Look at Amy knows everything. If Amy's confused, everyone else is confused. And I agree with Mark and Kathy. I like the board. You know, Leilani, I love Leilani, obviously. And I like that we got um Manny and Leilani in. I think, you know, we should have younger voters and then hundreds of doors. I'm not one young people on our board. We want people who have. You know, that they just want younger people on the board. So as I've only lived here since two thousand and seventeen and have only witnessed one mayor and a bucket full of drama. My experience is too limited for a personal opinion, but I will do full research and speak to many residents. My concerns about a four-year term is that. I have seen too much dysfunction from trustees in the last few years on this board. One trustee during COVID wasn't even in this country. And nobody, you know, Tom, people tried to fight that. And Nora, it was wrong. It was really wrong. And two trustees didn't even show up after hurricane either. And the nonprofits in this village carried the can for a year and a half. And Manny is running on this issue that there was no government help. I mean, Manny had to help with FEMA. So that is my concern about a four-year board, that we could have been struck, stuck with somebody who was fighting with our village manager. And and all these, you know, and a Democrat Party who's doing nothing in this village. Nothing. We don't even know who they are. We don't even, they're like this invisible group who think they have power and no one knows who they are. I look at Hastings website, I look at Yost Ferry. I mean, yes, every trustee I know that I do know, I. Talked to a wry one, and she said, we have a, if we have a village manager. And they're doing a good job, what's wrong with having four-year terms? But I haven't spoken to enough people. Personally, and I like to talk to people and I shouldn't have an opinion because I haven't lived too long enough. But um, but I do really believe in what I said too, that if Nora did say that, I think Nora is absolutely right. I don't. Fully believe in the Mamaronek itself. They're not right, they're not, you know, they're not.
Journalists.
They're not journalists. They're not what Louis, but I don't think there should be lies. And I think there should be, you know, things. Out in the open about all of this, and I think it should be on the ballot in November. Thanks.
Hillary, can I ask you, your paper synchronized two-year terms or staggered four?
I don't know yet.
Okay, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Hello, you, man?
Hi, um, my name is Luca Jovio. I live uh down on Nine Acre Lane in Oriente. Um, I'm a MHS student. I'm a senior in the original civic research and action programs. This is my fourth year in the program.
Wow.
I'm very close friends with students who um drafted legislation and 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 pushed so hard for it to get passed. Uh, I'm very proud that it's gotten to this point. Um, I recently turned eighteen this past fall, and uh even though I'm going to college next year. I do very much intend to vote absentee ballot in future elections. Um. And I can, and I've also been fortunate enough over the past four years to have volunteered in two local elections. One for our USR Center, even this past year with uh the trustee race. And um based on my experience, I, I can't stress um enough how important it is to get adequate voter engagement. Um, you know, and make sure that everybody in the village is able to get their voice heard, especially by those in power. Um. So as a student who's gonna be going to college next year and is gonna be voting absentee. I would much rather refer vote on one absentee ballot than multiple absentee ballots. Um. And I'm sure many other uh people in the community have the same, have the same uh opinion uh on this matter. And um, and it's a, it's a far more efficient process and uh. And makes the voting process far more um, far more convenient and gets. Let make sure that a more diverse set of the community and the members of the communities have to get their point across. And that's really what I believe that this is about, is ensuring that the um. The opinions and the voices of all residents of those who were. Heard, um as the research does show that on major election, the general election, midterm elections. Um, that they often get far greater turnout than the off-year elections. Thank you very much for your advice and support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Kobe.
I, a question, are you, because Lou seems to be getting a tally. Um, are you saying, um. Uh, similar, I think, to what um. Yeah. Catherine was saying in terms of uh all uh five-year, five um, having it all at the same time, because.
I, I support staggered elections.
Staggered, staggered fours.
Yeah.
She supports what the proposal was.
Okay.
I, I thought I heard.
All those tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Julie McThe North. I live on Coeur d'Alene, Oriente, and I'm a student here at MHS. I believe that by holding local elections every year, we are increasing the cost of voting. And in turn lowering voter turnout rates, these costs are included complex. Complex of work, especially those that work multiple low wage jobs, conflicts with family schedules and responsibilities. Constant need to get up to speed on various candidates. Nationally example, prove aligning elections with federal elections increase turnout and actually turn out to vote. It's a first step to meaningful political engagement. I urge the board to align with all of them.
Thank you very much.
Do you have an opinion on the terms?
Link.
The link to terms.
Four years.
Four years?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like a, like a young woman who knows her mind.
Hello, um, my name's Latissa Pinto. I'm a junior at the Marion High School.
Send it down.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, I'll also be speaking on behalf of the Oak Ridge students who are currently in college. Um, aligning local elections with even numbered years makes it more convenient for future voters like us to consistently get to the polls. It saves us time and effort while also increasing the number of people voting in these important local elections. With more residents voting in even numbered years, which is so much of the deal, you're getting a larger and more diverse of voters. This is good for the models. Um, do you mind if I repeat that again?
Yes, please.
I appreciate it.
Please.
With more residents voting in the same pairs, como, to mas, to mostrar los datos. Conseguirían un número mayor y más diverso de votantes. Esto es bueno para la gente.
Thank you very much. Do you have an opinion on any terms? Okay, thank you. Yes. Get the reservation.
Thank you, eight eighteen Woodbine Avenue. Um, here tonight as co-president of the League of Women Voters of Rochester, Mamaronek. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to um express our views on the proposed legislation. Um. Our mission at the League of Women Voters is to empower voters and defend democracy. Uh, and at first I was uh planning to just clear the record uh on the fact that the league has, has.
My fault, my fault, my fault.
Has not taken the position of merits of the proposed law. And I want to thank trustee Young for for clearing that up.
I shouldn't have made a mistake to begin with, my fault.
And we appreciate. So, um, the present part of our mission is to empower voters. Uh, that's led us to the conclusion that although we don't take a position on the merits. We feel strongly that this is an issue that needs to be decided directly by the voters. In a ballot on the refer, uh in a, in a referendum on the ballot in November. And in November, because that's when it's going to empower the most voters. Uh, it really doesn't, as we said before, it really doesn't empower voters to have this, really, it's an important issue. Decided by five members of the board and it doesn't empower voters. For them to have to go through this uh process of per- permissive referendum to collect thousands of votes in a very short time. So what's most empowering for voters is to have them decided in November. After an opportunity to become educated, as you can see from the people here, there's a lot of confusion. You know, and we don't even fully, you know, get all the implications, but um. Rest assured, if it is on the ballot in November or in June, as the case may be. The League of Women Voters will endeavor to um educate and engage the members of the voting public. Uh, as as best as we can. And um, so we hope that people take that into consideration. Yeah. Say one more thing. I just want, I just want to give a shout out to Joe Liberty. Um, who is an incredible asset to the Mariner and that's a large one. And thank you for raising up the next generation of civic minds and people.
Do you, do you have an opinion about uh synchronized twos or staggered fours? No.
So we have not taken a.
Okay, okay.
A merits of it.
Okay.
Only on the um. On the way, yes.
And you, and you mentioned November. Is 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 June unacceptable? Is that the primary?
If, if, I'm sorry. If the intention is for the most amount of voters to be able to vote. It seems logical that when we're elected, we're brought up much more voting turnout than in June, or kind of well. And we get a few enough voters as this and the off-year elections in November. I think we'll get a very poor turnout in June, and I would strongly recommend this thing.
That's fair. That's a persuasive, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening.
Hi, I'm Allison May. I live at five three six Monroe Avenue. I am for staggered four years. Um, I think staggered elections would be a good idea because I think continuity is very important. Um, but I am for a referendum in November. I think it's uh. It's on our ass online almost. Push it to the electorate uh to get those twenty-two hundred signatures or whatever we have to get. To get it on the ballot. Um, so I'm definitely for that.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around the staggered four years.
Staggered four years.
No, I, no, I understand it. I've, I'm, I'm talking about a, as a mechanical operation, right? If. If, if uh whoever wins in twenty-three, right?
Well, that would, that would, that would saddle us with another off-year election.
Let, let me get it. It, it might be best whoever wins in twenty-three. To start this in a, to start this process in, if we do it that way, in a gubernatorial year. And then just go every gubernatorial year.
Meaning?
So not, so you, you, does it election twenty-three, right? Twenty-four is the presidential.
Yeah.
So you can't have two people elected uh for a one-year term.
Oh, no, no, but 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 we'd be up uh the three.
No, but but you, you want to have all five people at the same time.
That's not a.
Two.
I'll see, I'll see what, yeah.
Two years.
I was thinking about it every four years, everybody's.
Yeah, no, it, it makes your brain hurt. Yeah, you know.
So if you have two.
I got, no, I got you, Alan. I got you. I'm sorry.
And I do.
I think some, it's important for continuity.
And you, you serve a four-year term, right?
Sorry?
You serve a four-year term.
I will. This term was for one.
You, for the remainder.
She's running again. Running again. I, I have a question. Um, do you prefer, do you recommend staggered four-year terms? On the even years or on the odd years and cycle with the town, county and county elections?
I, I think that you'd have to figure that out. I, I don't know. Maybe the League of Women Voters would have a. I, I think that you'd have to figure that out, I, I don't know, maybe the League of Women Voters would have a analysis or help.
No, I just, there were, there were comments tonight about how it's more convenient to vote just in the even years, but in reality, even if we make this change, we will still have town elections in both the towns, Maranick and Towns Arri, and our county legislator every two years, and then every four years, we have our county executive. So even if we, the Board of Trustees is elected in even years, there are going to be voters should be voting in the odd years too.
That's right.
But, you know, we're, we're talking about getting out the maximum turnout for the village of Maryne. We're, we're not worried about the town of Maryne, which very rarely has a contested election. But I don't remember the best twenty years, the town of Maryne, I don't contest.
And, and there are, there are movements to synchronize, uh, to the federal schedule on, on all levels. There's, there, there are very few movements to, to go as a code of number years.
Well, there's no movement in the county and the town of Rye.
Well, perhaps they'll follow our lead.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.
So, um, first of all, thank you for letting us vote on it. All right, I, I did like your proposal. And I'm also with the others who said since the whole purpose of this is to empower voters, we should empower voters and let them vote in November when they vote, will be voting in November, so that makes sense to me. Um, I, I have a couple of comments, I think generally what we should do to proceed is we need to educate the voters on, see, we're voting on two things. One thing we're voting on is, should the term be two years or four years? And the second thing we're voting on is what year is it to be voting on? Those should be two separate measures, and the voters should understand and giving contrasted opinions. Uh, maybe we can do something, I was thinking in June, when the students that are back, we all think our students are, and they are smart in the world, they'll be back from college, let them explain it. And then there are some people who have alter opinions on this and let them come in and explain to citizens. Maybe we can do a Zoom session. Uh, but I, I have some personal opinions. Um, I think you're elected to serve two years and a lot of our elected constituents are elected to serve two years. And people decide to run for Congress knowing full well that they are going to have to run every two years, every member of Congress around the country. Uh, our state assembly person. Pop quiz, who knows who that is? You vote for him every two years, but Steve Otis, he runs every two years. Catherine Parker, who is our county legislator, runs every two years. So the point being, you know, let the voters decide, there, there are, um, there's precedent for both. A lot of people like the ability to have accountability, especially given how things have gone in the village more recently. So I think it makes sense to do two. Now, on the other issue of odd versus even, um, I, I just want to make everyone aware, our county legislator uh, who is Catherine, is about to term out after twenty-twenty-three, so in twenty-twenty-five, a new Democrat will be running. Also in twenty-twenty-five, because we also do our county legislator every four, excuse me, our county exec every four years, uh, George Latimer will be leaving and we will be running a new Democrat. So while I understand the spirit of maybe wanting to do it on odd years, we are an important sea of blue as a Democrat in the village of Maranick, and those of us who have lived, I've lived here for, um, three decades. Not so long ago, like before Trump, our county executive was Rob Astorino. Uh, our, the first time Catherine ran in two thousand thirteen, she barely won against a Republican. So taking the sea of blue and moving them to an even year might seem on its face, you know, to be something that helps, uh, in terms of getting people to the ballot. But people came out for George, people come out for Catherine, and those are important seats for us to keep in terms of our well-being here as citizens. So I think we need to slow down, there's no rush for this, I think we can vote in November. It can give citizens a time to get educated on these various issues, on two years versus four years. Uh, my, my personal opinion is two years, and my personal opinion is we are better on odd years, uh, because we need to protect these seats as Democrats, especially in twenty-twenty-five. Um, but again, thank you for listening to the voters, and I, I'm hoping that a lot of the people, uh, that wrote emails were not comfortable in coming in person. I want to address that separately and ask that we consider as well as part of this referendum that we're putting to voters in November, an anti-bullying referendum. I can tell you that a number of people who wrote you emails were concerned about coming in person. Uh, they have been screamed at, and they've watched this happen. Um, you're laughing.
Yeah, because it, it, it's, it's political theater. That's what you're doing right now.
This is political theater?
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is.
It's kabuki there. You're here to talk, you're here to talk about local law.
Voters who are here, it's not political.
They, they, you're here to talk about the local law, please keep your comments.
I'm interested in myself.
Okay, fine.
I think the, that it would make sense in this village to have an anti-bullying, you're talking over me. Right? Excuse me?
Please go ahead.
I think a lot of citizens that wrote to you were concerned about being here in person because of that kind of exchange. And I think that is suppresses our democracy. It didn't start here, like Norm had an issue with it as well, but you have an issue with it, Lou has an issue with it. And I think we need to hold, this doesn't happen in Village of Larchmont, it doesn't happen in the town of Maranick. And I think people would like to have some sort of anti-bullying referendum that would say something about how things are handled in meetings, as well as how things are handled online. Not with your personal accounts, but
I'm sorry, but you, you're not addressing the issue. You, you're, you're going off-base, this is about
It is general off-base, but I'm here, and I just think it's something that needs to be, Maryne, it's a lot of people are not here because of that.
Okay, it seems like we have a lot of good.
I, I, I like to make two comments, one, I think, thank you for your comments. That's actually three. Um, I think all of the comments that we received via email should be assembled and put in the next iteration of this conversation, because it looks to me there is going to be another iteration. So I know there aren't technically public comments at the, at the hearing because they weren't here, but um, th- those people should be, should be encouraged, we should include those comments. I will also say, I get a lot of comments from people who are echoing exactly um, what Amy said, and that people don't want to come to these meetings because they're, it's unpleasant, that, that they see people being treated unpleasantly and don't want to put themselves out there. And, um, you know, people don't want to be a part of this because they feel uncomfortable, so I, I, I think I meant, I, I, I don't think that Amy is incorrect, and I think that we should all be written. That was another one of those kinds of comments from, we should all be mindful and respectful of one another and allow people to say what they want to say, and not, and, and, and and not be sarcastic or dismissive of anyone.
Truth matters.
It did, Nora.
Truth matters.
Context matters, uh.
Truth matters, the League of Women Voters supports my proposal.
And trans.
George Latimer supports my
You're out of order.
Neither of those are true.
George, Georgia's not supportive, support the idea of
Because he doesn't support your proposals, so let's talk
I spoke to George and he said
If he's not here to
I get to argue with you.
He's not even here to say either or, if he's not here to say either or, then we, if he's not here to say either or, we can move forward. If we can move forward, because at the end of the day, it was based upon the, the comment, the, um, public comment section is based upon what you feel, and we can't speak on behalf of somebody else who is not here, correct?
No, you can't, yeah, and, and, you know.
I'm clear on what I just asked.
This is very apparent that po- part of this is orchestrated political attack, and that's fine. I've been here a long time, I've been through other political attacks, and
Nora is echoing the same thing I said.
Yes, and, and, and how surprising is that?
Can I say something? I will, I will wait until the last person, I'll wait until you say something.
So, uh, my name is David, the resident of Maranick, it's two thousand, it's four. Uh, it's the first time I ever come here, and I only come for one reason, because I want to be sure that voters are heard, and I want to avoid a permissive, uh, I think the permissive, the permissive referendum.
Mandatory is what you want, you want a mandatory.
No, it'd be a permissive.
I had read that it was maybe going to go to a permissive referendum, that really scared me, as as, as just a voter, you know, I've been a poll worker at Maranick a few times, so I really care about democracy, and I really care about voting. I don't know if it's for years, I let people decide, I, I'm fine with either way, I will fudge either way. What I want is that people decide, so I want the referendum, I want it in November, and I want as many as people as possible to, to participate. Not a June, not permissive, just give the people possibly to speak their voice, and then majority wins.
Thank you.
And that's a valid point, because the whole point of this is to have more people participate, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Helen Rafferty, I live at five twenty-two, Mustard Davenport, I'm a Maranick, I've lived here for thirty years. Um, I think that the students' efforts to, um, get as many people in the community active in our political process is a wonderful idea. I don't know enough about political process to say how it should be worked out, or when it should be voted on. I would be very, very happy for it to be a public referendum. I will also say that I, I am not a political ally of Amy's, I am not her political party. But if I was here in the exchange that she just had with this group here, I would cry, because I'm a crier. So I think it, maybe bullying is the wrong term, but that exchange showed an absolute lack of civility, and I am not going to pin that on any one person. Um, perhaps it is a process issue rather than a personality issue, and that a process needs to be introduced into these proceedings, so that people don't get into these exchanges that are wildly unpleasant and uncomfortable for the rest of us to sit here and listen to. Um, I'm not tough enough, so I am not going to engage in further political discussions with this group. Um, and I would say that a civility initiative maybe is is something that we could all benefit from, and make us all feel more comfortable talking to each other, and just let us know how to talk to each other.
Fair enough.
I think the problem is that people on both sides here are getting personally offended, and feeling personally attacked, and it should be not about the person, it should be about the process. So I would support and would love to be a part of any discussions about how do we restore civility to what is often becoming very uncivil back and forth. And I would never want to be up there late at night, having people tell me what's wrong with me. Couldn't do that, so I want great respect for you, for the work you take on, for the responsibility you take on. But the way things go to up in here does have to change. And I'm not speaking for anybody else but myself, but I think this, um, village does amazing things when we get together. We would just say, let's stop blaming and shaming each other, and let's work together, all of us be better. I think we could do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
I was here a number of times in the past year, speaking at this podium, and I recall one evening I was here and I said, try to remind everybody up there that regardless of what you agree, disagree with the person who is speaking at this podium, they deserve your respect, they deserve you to at least listen to them. If you don't agree, you say thank you. When you ran, I'm not gonna, I know you're not supposed to a- a- address anyone individually, but I would say, and I recall some years ago when somebody was running, their platform was, people who speak here deserve respect. I will always, uh, allow somebody to say their piece and respect what happened. Unfortunately, that has kind of disappeared, and I think it's very unfortunate. And I, I think it's sad, sad that somebody can't come up here. Maybe you can simply say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, misgracious, sorry, I didn't mean to, but I, I wanted to say something, but I was gonna wait till everybody finished.
Okay, you, you, you go ahead, you go ahead.
So, John Mustard, um, three oh four Prospect Avenue. And in full transparency, I'm a Democratic district leader, and I see a lot of us here. And some on the dais, some in the attorney seat over here, and some in the audience, so including Mallory, who is also a Democratic district leader. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. My opinion is, we should definitely be putting this forward for a referendum, um, and, you know, uh, in November, at the normal time when people turn out. We had a re- series of referendums at the last election. Everybody felt like that worked out the way they wanted it to work out, so, you know, I, I think it's a system that seems to work. Ironically, uh, I was a Board of Trustees member, and in the fifteen years or so since I was on the board, four trustees or members of the board have resigned. Which means we couldn't find trustees to even serve two term, two-year terms. To completion, let alone imagine the number of people that will have to resign when we go to four-year terms. I think it's something that we have to anticipate moving forward, because the, the number of people resigning, in my opinion, will go up because we, we have not been able to have that, I mean, I think Tom knows. The village, there are twenty-three villages in Westchester County, and there is only one village that has four-year terms. That village is Harrison, which is actually a co-term as town name. So, you know, we're acting like this would be a cost savings, when in reality, as Nora said, the elections are happening anyway. And we can't find people to fill out two-year terms, let alone four-year terms. I, I just honestly think that moving ahead with a referendum is the best way to do this, whatever we decide, four-year terms, two-year terms, if you want to put a two-year term on the referendum, you know, a, a three-year term on the referendum for members in Staggered, a lot of communities that have, uh, have different terms for their mayor and for their board. Some communities, in fact, have two-year terms for the mayor and three-year terms for the village. Um, which, you know, seems difficult, but they seem to manage. And I will say that the cost savings, i- i- in the, the idea that turnout would be increased, uh, one community, Portchester, which has three-year terms because of a court-mandated, uh, situation, uh, Dennis Pillow, who was the mayor, basically said, it actually didn't increase their turnout. So, I, I don't know what the solution is, but, um, I do encourage you to put it on for a referendum in November. I, I think that's the safest bet.
You know, John, uh, the, uh, Harrison has two-year mayor.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And four-year
And four-year trustees. And, and a five-term term limit, we have a term limit here.
Yeah, I mean, those are all things that could be put on certain referendums. I, I would encourage.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
Thomas, you're bored?
I, yeah, well, I just commented, I guess, for the whole community. I, I wanted to be respectful and wait for every, um, individual who was in attendance to make their comments. And knowing that, um, knowing that this is definitely something that the three of us who just got elected, Manny, Lou and myself, that this is something that we believed in, because one, we believe in our students, we believe in our young people, and two, we thought it was, or think it is a good idea in terms of voter participation, as well as in the, the increasing of the terms to, from two to four, it does help the individual who is sitting in this space. Um, for people who have run, who, people who have tried to run for a position, if you know what it takes to run a campaign in one, in this community, I can't speak for other communities, it's tough. It's very tough, you have opposition, you have nastiness, you do have, you're treated unpleasant. You are, you can't find people, you can't find people, because one, if we don't educate people on what the process is to run for as an elected official, what this position entails, everything in, in between, whether it's this community, whether it's for, um, elected official for this municipality, or we're asking people to run for our school board, we are lacking, we don't have people volunteering. elected official for this municipality, or we're asking people to run for our school board, we are lacking, we don't have people volunteering. So, yes, then you'll get the same, same people. I get it. If you don't want, you, you want two years because God forbid, if we had somebody here for four years that we don't want, we've, I've sat through plenty of presidents that I don't like, had done nothing for me and my people. But people decide that they're gonna run, but if they're not given information, if they don't give a, if they're not given a chance, and especially if for the people who are on committees in our community, if you're not even reaching out to them and doing your own due diligence, and then for the people who do decide to run, there are comments that come out that are unpleasant. Yeah, people are gonna get turned away, and then you're gonna get the same people who continuously run and run and run. I'm, I'm I don't even, I believe we all could do better at the end of the day. I believe that we, the four-year terms allows the individuals coming into this space, especially if you are new. Time to adjust, time to get things done, time to even adjust your mindset. I came off of a rigorous primaries to go into a r- a rigorous uh um, a, a, a general election of November and into the seat. And what do we like to, what, almost, almost three months in, and I'm still trying to get my footing. I just, this session, this work session was able to put something on the work session. You need time. So if I have to think about running for next year, which I will do if I get the chance, that's gonna take up, that's, that's time. So I just want people to be mindful, not just of like, for in terms of the residents, because I, I do appreciate everybody's um opinion. I don't mind this going for a referendum, because I believe that it's up to the voters, because if we truly wanna go for, you know, it, it being about what we say in terms of good governance, yes, it should go to the people. Yes, it should. But please be mindful that when you're thinking about, if anything that we vote on in this community, anything you have an opinion about, have the opinion, not just for your hate for somebody, but for the facts and the reality. And understand, because one thing I said when I took this, when I swore, I said, please give us grace, because it's not all times am I gonna be perfect and have the perfect answer? Because I may change my mind and it could be swayed by your, your, your your, your, your stance. And if you're as passionate as you are based upon fact, not hate, we can get things done. So, and one thing that was said about um, uh, uh, the board and, you know, and and behaviors, yeah, and past and possibly present, there's a lot of, you know, unnecessary chatter, but gotten and harassed, if we were talking about bullying, it can go both ways. It can go both ways. So be mindful of that, and I'm done. Because God knows you don't want me to go on and on about what happened during my election, new running last year and all the comments that I got. But I will not do that.
Some of them are here tonight.
Got that right.
I mean, I think Lealani painted it, you know, perfectly. When we think about moving to the four, you have to think, we've been here for three months, and she just got something on the board session, it takes time. You don't, we don't immediately come in and just, you know, are able to just pick everything up. It takes time to adjust, to learn, to understand before you really feel like you're making an impact. It's a lot of time. You have, people have to understand that we don't do this full-time, but it is a full, it is a full-time. Bring emails, after we, we, the residents that come and sit in these long meetings. And we do it because we care about our community, but to think that we have two years and we can, and barely get something done, I have to constantly be thinking, now, okay, great, I'm gonna have to win an elec- win for a reelection, and something about that at the end of this year is insane. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to, you know, get to all the things that I promised or hope you, I think I, I would wanna get done to better our community. So I think we have to think about, one, the toll it takes on somebody who comes and runs up here, and this is not for everybody, but the people who do do it, you have to think of the toll it takes on the body, the mind, for wanna go in and, you know, serve their community, get anything done. Government takes a long time. Two years is not nearly enough time, especially when you're new to this. We have something of a board, of boards as these exclusive clubs with people who have the time to come here and come up here and do this. I'm a young person, so I'm twenty-five years old. I, I, I love my community and I have a full-time job with this and a full-time job outside of this. And to think that it could only be people who kind of have worked their entire lives and have the free time to kind of answer and be present to be around, it's, it's not that. It's people like me, it's young people wanna come up and advocate for their com- community, but they don't have the chance because it's of the, to the commitment. But you know, it's like I said, it's not for everybody, and this is something that is for me, and I really believe that it's, it's time to kind of make that change. Two years is not enough time. There's a lot of things that are wrong with our community today, and, and, and nine minutes that'll come up is later in our agenda, is our capital plan, which is insanely insane to think about that. This is something I haven't been past for years, but we look at our community's infrastructure, look around our community and see things in disarray, thing, look at this, look at this building we're sitting in. We have a horrible police department that our, our, you know, officers have to work out of. We have this courtroom that's not in good shape, this whole building's not in good shape. We have all our municipal pieces in multiple places instead of being housed in one. We have to think about, it, that's not gonna get done in two years. For all we know, we could, this is gonna tell me that, say we didn't pass, it could, you know, a year from now, and, and if we don't come back, we give a brand-new board, it's back to the drawing board, and this is something that we cannot continue to kick the can down the road and think that two years is enough time for a board to come in, when we know every two years that can change and that can be shuffled. So I really believe this, it's, it's very important that, you know, I hear the residents, I hear their advocate, they don't think it's a good idea, and they think that we need to stick to this kind of two-year stagger schedule and having an election every year, but that's not healthy for the people who are running, and it's not healthy for our residents to, to expect things to get done. That's all.
And let me not, I'm sorry, let me not even forget. The most important thing is inclusion when we're talking about our community members. And if you look around today or tonight and whoever was in the room, the people that we really are trying to get to are not even represented.
Right in here.
One, we got a language problem, we get, we not all of our stuff is, 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 is in Spanish or i- in a bilingual state. And then two, how we, uh, my whole thing is sometimes we can't wait to, for people to come to us, we have to go to them. And let's not be too lazy to go to people when they need it. Not everybody has these beautiful schedules that where, like, and I know I don't, I, honest to God, I'm like, what? I think I wanna be up here all the time. Like, i- it's the amount of, the amount of work that it takes to do this job. I did not know, but I'm, I appreciate, I appreciate it all. With all my heart and soul, I do appreciate this, this space that we all get to sit in. We all get to sit in. But if we wanna make sure that our board continues to be diverse or be inclusive, we gotta start doing some work. And change is gonna be inevitable, because change is evolution. It will be hard, but not all change is bad, change is good too. Remain, remind yourself to be balanced.
I just wanna thank.
Sorry.
Uh, I wanna thank everybody who came, spoke on the issue, the issue that was before us, uh, what the public hearing was about.
Thank you.
But at the end of that, you saw kind of an illustration of why having an election every year is toxic. Because at the end of it, you know, it, it, it turned into the Kabuki Theater of the blatant political, you know, attack. And he stopped talking about what was going on on the agenda, and you know, it was, you know, I'm running this year and I understand it, and I'm fine with that. But, because I've been down this road before, I've been sitting up here a long time, people know who I am, they chose to go another way, I'm happy with that, that, that's the decision. But this is what we deal with all the time. And it was mentioned, and I just wanna point out, that last year, uh, when these three trustees were running, the first time I can ever remember, uh, the Democratic Party tried to throw three Democrats off the ballot, two of whom, two of whom were district leaders. Members of the own committee that they sat on.
One of them who's here tonight.
And they tried, no, two of you were district leaders.
Oh, yeah, 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 you don't know, one of the people.
Two of you are district leaders that your own committee tried to kick you off. The first majority, minority, people of color board, the ballot that this community has ever had. And they did not get the nuance of using pickyum and procedural electoral issues to knock you folks off the ballot, how just glaringly, you know, uh, wrong that was on so many levels. And you all persevered, and you had to go to court to retain your rights, and I admired you all for doing that. And then you were validated by the voters, both in the primary and in the election. And then here it is, you know, the, the election season starts again. A couple of months later, this is exactly what I was talking about in my email. And we go through the whole process this whole year, and there'll be another election in twenty-three, and if the law doesn't change, we'll go through the whole process starting in the beginning of the year, and you know, with the advent of social media, uh, you know, it, it, it allows, you know, negative, uh, bullying, uh, to, to manifest itself, and people say things on social media that they would never say to anybody else's face. And, uh, you know, I, I got off a couple of sites because I just, I, I didn't need the aggravation in my life anymore. You know, and I, I'm, I'm not a perfect person. I, I have, yes, lost my temper at times, but I, I, I believe I lost my temper because I was standing up for the village. Now, you, you disagree with me or agree with me, that's fine, but I'm, I'm definitely not perfect, I'm human. And I've been up here uh, a long time, and I, 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 I challenge anyone to point out an elected official in this community that's worked harder. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I find it, uh, amazing that people had to fight for what they were entitled to, from, you know, members of their own party who should have been helping them, and then even after they won the primary, got no help. And, you know.
Two-front war, a war before.
To, you know, to, to have, you know, a woman, uh, speak here tonight who's been very active in the village, not know who the leaders of the Democratic Party are. It, it speaks to who we are, and then, and, and I love being a Democrat, I'm a Democrat in my heart, I registered as a Democrat at eighteen. Uh, I, I can't remember ever voting for the other party, uh, that's just who I am, and I, you know, although I had friends in the other party. But, uh, you know, I, I, I was deeply, deeply disturbed. And truthfully, that, that's why I, I didn't ask for my party's endorsement, I'm gonna ask for the voters of my party's endorsement. Because I, I, I didn't wanna be involved i- in a situation with people, uh, who would do that to fellow Democrats. You know, to give them, you know, credence in that.
And, and, and the one thing, we, we heard talk about bullying, there were bullies at the podium tonight. And that's all I'm gonna say, not all of them hung around. Yes, Robert. Welcome back, Robert.
I'm one of those people that you're talking about.
Yes, you are.
You are.
Yeah, and I'd like to give some more background, you, you gave a kind of a one-sided view of this situation, I'd like to get the other side. When you keep collecting petitions, there is a proper way to collect valid signatures. In fact, please let me finish. Um, later this month is going to be a Zoom meeting from the Board of Elections in Westchester, explaining how that process, how you go about collecting valid signature. In the primary, the way primaries and general elections go, when you have contested parties, each side foils the signatures of, let me finish, please. And our side foiled the signatures that you, that were collected and found a number of what appeared to be invalid signatures. The process requires that we collect this together, you send it to the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections evaluates your findings and determines whether in fact there are um so many invalid signatures that those candidates could be removed from the slate. And that's what happened. It wasn't individuals, it was the Board of Elections that made the decision to remove candidates because they were, I would also point out that your slate and, and your representative, representative of you, foiled the signatures of the other Democrats. They did. Uh, excuse me, I'm, I'm speaking. You foiled the signatures, had you found that there were enough invalid signatures, you can bet your bottom dollar, you would have done this.
I am anxious because of.
It wouldn't have happened.
You say it wouldn't happen. Why, why, why would you?
Robert, please finish. And I'll, and I'll explain to you, I'll explain to myself.
And I can give you the name of the person because I, I don't know why you're smiling.
Please finish.
Uh, had you found enough that invalid signatures for the other slate, you would have done exactly the same thing. However, however, our signature, we did not have, we had enough valid signatures, that, that didn't happen. I would also point out that this past week I was listening on the radio and I was lis- I heard a kind of a documentary about Barack Obama, I don't know if you're aware of this, when Barack Obama was running for his first political campaign in Chicago, he was in a primary with another African-American candidate. He challenged that person's signatures, that person had to be removed. Barack Obama was asked about that, and he said, look, that, that's politics, that's how that works. If you wanna run for office, you have to comply with the law in collecting valid signatures. If, if you wanna come.
Yeah, I, I would.
How, how, I listen.
Uh, listen, uh,
This is not.
The, the, when we had to go to court, and you went to court.
Yes.
Opposing, when they had to go to court, you went to court opposing, right? You, 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 so it wasn't just the Board of Elections, you went to court. And at court, the judge himself said that there was no fraud, these, these were, these were people who, when they signed, they, they signed like that. And, you know, so, but I just wanna get to what you folks had to do. You had to foil the signature cards of hundreds and hundreds of people and compare them to what happened, right?
Because that's how it works.
I've been doing this for twenty-four years, I have never done that. I have never done that.
Well, you've done it before.
And, and it, it goes to that level. It goes to that level of, you know, avoiding elections that I, I, you know, I have had people say, we can challenge us, and I've said, I don't wanna challenge, I wanna have an election, that's what we're here for, that's what parties are here for. But, and what you're saying is, you, you're admitting that the Democratic Party did that to other Democrats, usually you do it to the other side.
That's how it works when you, when you are running for a political campaign. Also, as I said, your side, Baby Weinberger, foiled our signatures.
Who's Debbie Weinberger?
Uh, I'm sorry.
May, may I make a comment?
Yeah, anyway, this, this, this doesn't matter. It's nice to finally can see him.
The reason why I brought up the last election is because it's important to the overall reason as to why I was, I'm for the four-year, um, four-year term, moving from two-year to four-year. And I also brought it up because there's, there was concern as to why people do not possibly run for an election. Now, there's also some other things that while you appear stating that we, there are things that are missing, right? In terms of facts, there's a lot of things that are missing from the story. So, rather than prolong this, this, because I don't wanna quote people, rather than prolong this, if we can go, get to the agenda. And while I totally understand what you're saying, you want, you need to clear your side of the story or the side of, hold on, clear, clear the side of the story, whatever it is. Because there's many, there's many, there could be a lot of versions. And yes, people contest, and I can, I can, I can go toe-to-toe with people all day, but that's, this is not it. And if you want, I mean, I'm not trying to tell you to stop, Robert, I'm really not, but I'm just saying, like, if we are able to move forward, I was giving my. If we are able to move forward, I was giving my opinion based upon. What was on the agenda in terms of talking about the, the extension of the, um, election term.
You were painting a portrait, I know who I am.
Great.
You're painting a portrait that I was.
They say your name, though.
I, I, I understand.
You said in the board, so say the board.
And I just wanted other people to understand that it was more to, the way you presented it was, it was a simple. Um, bad act, and, and I just wanted to explain that it was more complicated. And that it was the Board of Elections that made that final decision.
Of course they did.
I, I agree that it was a very unfortunate. Uh, week for a lot of reasons. But I, I just felt like you were sending criticism my way that. I needed to kind of give the other side.
Thank you.
Thanks for clearing.
It was an unfortunate situation, I agree with you.
Thank you.
They also, so what I didn't hear from you.
Okay.
Uh, Leilani, and I had made a comment about the way some people on the board treat people at the speaker. I would love to hear you say that you agree that if somebody comes up here and they speak and it's. Different than what somebody would like to hear, you simply say thank you, you, you don't, you don't criticize them personally. You don't attack them. I would like you to agree that that's the way people should be treated. When they come to the podium and speak. I'd like to hear you say that.
Well, I would say, and as I stated before, I said that it goes both ways. Because one thing I'm not going to also accept, I'm not going to accept somebody to be able to talk to me any type of way. When they, and, and I think it goes both, when, hold on, as I shouldn't and as you shouldn't. And I also stated that there's, there may be some dysfunction when it comes down to how people, all people talk to each other. I did state that, so I'm not going to just say one way without saying another, because we do that a lot around here. It goes both ways. I talk about balance all the time, all the time, and I, and I'm talking. But I'm giving, I'm giving you my, but, and I stated that. I stated that, and you just want me to give one answer when I've given both. So, Robert, I can't give you exactly what you want because I talked about both. I talked about both.
And just to end. I agree with you, I think that there needs to be some way that we can kind of. Run fences.
Of course.
Other, I'm looking forward to do that.
Of course.
And, and there were things that went on, on both sides.
There were good people on both sides, yes, thank you.
I, I, the one thing that I. Wanted to say is Lou, and, and I would regret saying this, you recall last year. At the end of the meeting, you and I were sitting right there, and you said, X, you, tonight.
Yeah, this is, this is getting ridiculous. Come on. Like, didn't be second grade. Yeah, I need a motion to close. Orgy call the roll. He's rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Now, if no one makes a motion to adopt the law, the law will just die.
No.
I, I think, uh, I think what we want to do is send it back to.
We open and close the public hearing.
Yes, okay, right.
Just let me explain.
Okay.
We open and close the public hearing. The options are taking no action. Voting yes on it and voting no on it.
Okay, well, before we vote, I have questions for Bob then, all right?
Okay. This, we, we could ask Bob to redo another law in this world.
All right, well, Bob, Bob, so here's, here's the question.
Postpone your action to another meeting, you held the public hearing, you don't have to act tonight.
Okay, well, I, I think we, 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 we want to act tonight. So the question is. Um, uh, if we, if, if, if we have a, a referendum on this, is it possible? To have a referendum, yes or no, on, on elimination of off-year elections? And then if yes, you want two or four-year terms, is that, is that, is that something we could do?
No.
No?
I, I think we should just, you know, just, I, I think we should table this. Go back to, uh, a work session and work these issues out.
Okay.
Trying to work it out right here, right now.
I, I would say we have an order, if we were gonna, if we don't vote on this, I guess. At any time, we could vote on this, we could vote it up or down, right? So, I mean. Yeah, we don't have to renotice it, we could vote it up or down.
Unless the form changes.
Right, so, so, so.
It remains on the table. Fine, that's fine.
Motion that we vote this down, right, that we vote to not adopt the law, as said, so that. We don't give ourselves the option of adopting this law without having any, without tying it to any kind of referendum.
Well, I, 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 no, I can address that. I would do that, except for the fact that last year, when we attached the referendum to the same law. Uh, I was hoping we, we would get you, you, you to go along with it, and you voted it down anyway. So I want to keep this on the table.
You know, I'd like to, I would like to clarify that. We had kind of a vague law, you wanted to say yes or no. There was other discussion on the table and you didn't want to discuss it. So instead of actually thinking about what kind of law we might pass. It was a very limited scope and then it was over. I recommended that we add term limits, um, anyway, but, 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 but having said that, I'm making a motion. That we vote no on the proposed law that we just held a public hearing. If I get a, if there's a second, can we vote on it? If not, then it can be adopted at any point.
So if you second it, then we can sit there.
You, you, you can't make a motion to vote no, you would make a motion to vote on the bill.
Okay, right, I'm sorry, I make a motion to, okay. You're right, I make, I make a motion that we vote.
And if we vote yes or no.
No, there's no second, so, if you have no second.
I'm not hearing your second. Motion dies. Uh, I would like to. E- ask Mr. Spalzino, uh, to create, uh, possibly. Two laws, uh, one staggered term, four years. Right, like we have here with the referendum, and the other, uh, all five. One year, like, not one year, all five in the same, uh.
Synchronized two years.
Synchronized two years.
Yes.
Like, everybody, uh, everybody, let's say presidential election.
Okay.
And, and then, and then two years after that.
Everybody again.
In the group of talk.
So that would, that would meet the needs of the individuals who came up and stated that they'd rather have the two years.
Yes, but.
Um, it would just be all at once.
But you're all determined to do it on the even, on the federal and, and on the federal side.
The, the idea that, uh, you know, there's going to be nobody voting, uh, for the, you hit the, for the county executive or for the county. Uh, legislator, because we're not having election is not how politics works, politics works the other way.
I mean.
If you look at, look at the turnout this year, it's going to be a business.
Sometimes in the village of Mamaroneck, there are more, there, there have been more votes in the local election than for a county legislator.
Could that be, could that be, you know, I could, I'm just saying, could that be because, um, of possibly the individual who is going up? Like, who's, who's running? Because I think when, when people feel that they're represented, then they'll go out to vote for that person. But if people don't feel that they're represented, then they'll just let it go to the wayside.
Well, we, we don't know what the motivation of voters in any of these cycles is, we just know what the, what, what the numbers are.
I'm just saying, could it be?
I make a motion that this board, uh, uh, goes on the record. Um, uh, being in favor of even-year elections and abolishing off-year elections, and we move forward from there. Do I have a second?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I move, this board goes on the record as supporting. Even-year elections, eliminating off-year elections. That's, that's our position and we're going forward. That, that, that's, that's my, that's my motion.
So, so is the motion to, to ask the village attorney to create laws that reflect that?
Yes.
So as amended by what I just said, I would second that motion.
Okay, all right.
Orgy call. They, contingent upon there being referendum.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Trustee is rolling?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Um, yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
No.
I don't think we should have, I think we should stay on the odd cycle.
Okay.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
And I make a motion that any referendum that this board consider. Be set for November, where there's definitely going to be more turnout than the June primary.
I'll second that motion. Hold on. Trustee Roland?
Yes.
Trustee, guys, you read? Trustee Young?
No.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
All right.
So, at, at the risk of prolonging this.
Oh, we're just getting started, what?
Have a few more motions. Majority voted to. Please keep it down in the back, the, the, the majority voted to have. Four-year elections in the even-numbered years.
No.
Yeah, that, is what you said, staggered?
No, 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 I, 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 the motion was to hold elections. To eliminate off-year elections and hold them only on even-numbered years. Doesn't, it doesn't address, doesn't address the, the terms at all.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so that being said, prepare a law for, you know, all five every four years. And staggered every two years.
Okay, but, but the, but the overall, but the overriding consideration is we're getting rid of the off-year elections.
Wait, all four every four years?
No.
No, 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 no.
Let me just articulate this. One law, all five for four years.
All five for four years.
And the other, uh, like we do it now, three trustees, in even-numbered year, the, the next year, uh, trustee and mayor.
Next year or the next?
The next two years.
So, even-numbered years.
So, it's only even-upped years. Was that one of the things we wanted?
No, it's staggered fours or synchronized twos, that's all you got to say, and they're on even years, that's it, that's, that's all it is.
Or.
Staggered fours or, or synchronized twos, even years only.
So twenty-four is election twenty-six.
Yeah, school called like a baseball game.
I know, it's, it, well, I, I thought I understood it until we started explaining it.
November reference.
November reference.
Yes.
Which is fine, yeah, oh, oh, but I, I don't, good, so if it's a November referendum, I don't have to worry about running for a four-year term in twenty-three.
Nothing changes this.
Great.
Okay, nothing changes this year.
See, that's where they screwed up, they want to get rid of me, they should have said you run it for a four-year term in twenty-three.
Um, we have a press for you, are you want to invite her up, since, since this was part of the. May- maybe, oh, believe me, we, we probably couldn't make it. No, it wasn't easy to follow, sorry.
Eating it as it is, or is that, should that also be included on the referendum?
No, no.
It's not a Chinese menu.
No, no, that's out.
It's this law, we've held the.
So you're getting rid of, no matter what, on number of years. So that, I'm just trying to understand.
There's no law, we're, we're talking about having Bob work on it.
Okay. Right.
Right, to propose a reference, where there'll be another public hearing. Yes, yes.
There you go. Nothing's changed, no, nothing's changed tonight, everything's the same.
So, there'll, there'll be. A work session agenda, where we work on it probably a couple of times. Then we'll schedule a public hearing one night, and then subsequent two weeks after that, there'll be the public hearing. No, 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 it's. No, thank you, thank you for asking for clarity.
You know, Peggy, I thought I knew what this was all about until I started to explain it.
I have a question for Bob that's sort of related.
I'm sure.
I have a question for you that's sort of related. Um, even the, the, the Assembly and let this, the state legislature has not modified. The quirk about timing of referendum. So we're still gonna, no matter what gets decided. It kind of has to wait until July, as close to November as possible.
It wanted to be July, November.
Yeah, but has to be to the Board of Elections by roughly August first, ten, you know.
Yeah, okay.
But we have to, but we can't do it in two, yeah, it shouldn't be done too far in advance because of the timing of the sixty days. Under state law.
At least we know where we're going.
Who knows if the, they'll change that by June. They're talking, they were talking about it, they were, at my com, that was one of, that's something that's being considered, so.
I was also, I mean. So right, she says we can go on.
I was ready to pack up.
All right, order the bills. And I, and I look forward to the league's input, I really do.
Thank you.
Good night, Mr. Lambert.
For all that.
Good night, Mallory.
Night.
A resolution authorizing budget transfers. Authorizing executive, uh, budget transfers to over budget accounts, uh. So it's, uh. You, you, you all see the authorizations in front of you? Anybody have any questions or concerns? And your motion? Or, no, uh, call the roll. Trustees, Rollins?
Yes.
Does it read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Uh. Resolution authorizing budget amendments, uh, you all see the, the changes in front of you, any questions or concerns? Need a motion?
So moved, second.
Or, uh, Orgy. Trustees, Rollins?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes, nothing's coming from the reserve fund, things are just being adjusted.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes. Abstract ordered vouchers tonight, the ordered vouchers is a doozy. Uh, four million eight hundred four thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Questions or concerns? No.
Yeah, the only one I have is, is in the, uh, in the Medicare distribution.
Yeah, there's some stuff in there that just makes my, but we stuck with it, right?
Well, so Jerry, the, the last time for retired trustee, it was a thousand dollars, now it's five hundred twenty-seven, so it was.
Oh, I see, so that, so that.
Forty dollars per month is what the reimbursement.
Okay, so that, that, uh, that retired trustee gets, will get like, is getting like five hundred and some odd dollars, uh, a month? Okay.
All right, I just wanted to make sure it was going to be a thousand. Uh, I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Org. Trustees, Rollins?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh. Resolution, uh, that, that's going to be tabled, we, we talked at a work session tonight about, uh. Uh, wireless telecommunications and, uh, I recommended that we, uh. We hire a consultant to look at the contract and to see if we can get a better deal and to look at other issues with it. So that's going to be held, uh, new business. Uh, resolution authorizing supplemental appropriation to fund survey work for the Florence Street Saw and Water. Evaluation Improvement Plan, uh, this has been long overdue, the folks on Florence Street. Uh. Any questions or concerns from the board?
No, it's way overdue.
Okay, uh, so I want to make a motion, this is for seven hundred, seven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh. Orgy call. Trustees, Rollins?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young? Yes.
You, Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, resolution scheduling a public hearing, uh, on PLLC to adopt letter of revision for twelve forty-one flagler. This is what's called the law mark, it's a revision of the flood map, uh, that's made by, uh, the federal government. And, uh, what we will be voting on, if we, uh, adopt the public hearing, is basically to accept. Uh, the federal government's reinterpretation of the flood map.
So moved.
And the public hearing, uh, will be for February twenty-seventh. As a motion, a second Orgy call, please. Trustees, Rollins?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, resolution scheduling a public hearing on PLG twenty-two twenty-three, local law to exceed the property tax cap. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three, twenty-two twenty-four. Uh, what this is really quickly is, uh, most municipalities. Put this law on the agenda, uh, don't pass it, uh, let it expire, but if, if you need to go over the tax. You have to pass this law.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we haven't gone over the tax cap in a long time, but, you know, it, it's prudent to have the law ready. In case, uh, you, you have that predicament and, uh, you have to exceed the cap by, you know, some amount.
It's a tool we hope we don't have to pick up.
That's right.
And so we, we schedule a public hearing for two weeks from now, but we just keep it open until we adopt the budget and then the night we. And so we we schedule a public hearing for two weeks from now, but we just keep it open until we adopt the budget. And then the night we the evening we adopt the budget, we either vote. Yes or no on this law.
Thanks.
All right. Yeah, so that's scheduled. We're scheduling this for two weeks from February twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
All fit.
All right.
Uh, scheduling a public hearing, propose local law to amend chapter. One general provisions as it relates to maintaining an electronic copy of the village code and adding a new chapter, chapter three, as it relates to amendments. And publication of the village code. We talked about this in work session. Bobby, you want to give a brief?
Basically, it updates the requirements of the. Village Code with respect to maintaining the village code. To the situation that reflects things like publication on the web is more important than publishing in a newspaper.
Gotcha.
I have a couple just questions.
Mm-hmm.
And one, um, for section one. Um, village clerk treasurer will make an electronic copy of this code available on the village's website. Um, but that's E-code. We meant like a PDF version because the, you know, E-code changes. So I think, do we want to have like? A like a PDF, like an electronic PDF that kind of is stopped at a moment in time?
That's up to you. My view, my, I drafted it to allow the village clerk. To determine what he or she thought was appropriate. Given, you know, in light of whatever the technology is at the time. As so that there was always some place where someone would go to look at an official version of the village code.
That would be different from E-code? I guess that's my question.
Have to be. I mean, I I think we would prefer to remain with E-code. With the simple fact that if every time the board amended the village code.
Right.
For us to, you know, Palopedia, extract pages, insert pages, hopefully put them in the right location. Where E-code is, I mean, the code is.
Yeah, I get I guess.
Any code is a is a.
So I guess, I guess with the paper copy, you still keep making changes to it. So it's 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 kind of live as opposed to being.
We have two copies in our office. They may want paper copy.
Getting updated its current versus historical.
Yes.
Um, and then, um, one, seven, um, that they're being repealed. This is section one dash seven of the code. I guess it's right. It's got two sections to it, but the one section is, I thought, are, okay. And then, um. How do changes get, this is, I guess, this is the other question. How do changes get tracked? What do we mean? But we have the same problem now because. We keep pulling out those sections of the code and putting new sections in the binders.
Yes, and there's notes on the bottom because you want to supersede it.
Right. And that'll still be in E-code.
E-code also maintains the history. In E-code, you'll see it says amended some such.
But sometimes Sally and I have had to do a deep, deep dive like into minute books to find stuff. If something else gets, so, okay.
Okay, we need to.
Okay.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Orgy call. Trustees, Rollings? Guys, you read? Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, resolution scheduling a public hearing on PLE twenty-two twenty-three, amending chapter thirty-six of the village code. And indemnification defense to limit defense costs. What this is, is we're scheduling a public hearing and it's about. Only having people, you know, we 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 had a situation here where the village of Mariner incurred a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of legal defense. Uh, for a. The a land use board member, and we had no. Provision to control these courts. Uh, our code allowed unlimited spending on these attorneys. And, uh, you know, I don't think any controller in the world. Uh, would recommend that that be the case. So with this law will allow, if it's passed, uh, to. That the person who is, you know, has difficulty and needs a lawyer. Uh, has can hire a lawyer for the amount that the village attorney charges for litigation plus twenty percent. So I think that that's fair. You know, we tried to do this a few years ago. Uh, I offered a couple of compromises. One compromise was actually twice of what the village attorney. Was getting at the time. And, you know, I I got no takers. And, uh, you know, it, you know, we're going to talk about being fiscally responsible. This is, you know, a fiscally limited.
Uh, yeah.
Measure that, you know, we have to have.
So so moved.
Second.
I have a question. Um, so to clarify, where the administrative proceeding, again, what we've. But we had this conversation last time and didn't come to any resolution. What would the administrative proceeding be like? An ethics board complaint? I mean, I'm not just really, what else would it be? What?
Yeah, that's the principle.
So it's basically this, if somebody is, if somebody. Has an ethics charge against them, this really is just related to the ethics board. It's not related to any other kind of situation.
Well, that's. It's definitely, yeah, it's well, we talked about the NLOB. We talked about different possible contingencies.
Yeah, I mean, unless unless another.
But those, they're not enforcement proceedings. They don't have a penalty attached to. I mean, this doesn't change existing law, that remark.
Right, but it's just, it just, but basically this law. Affects essentially. Somebody who's defending a an employee which could be a volunteer, right? Um, a volunteer, board member, or commission member, or anybody. In this room who's brought up on an ethics charge by the ethics board. It's really related to ethics board charges. I just.
That 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 definitely was the genesis of it.
Okay, is there anything else?
Not that I can think of, but that that's not a change from current law.
Yeah, I I I.
No, it's just.
I think a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars on an ethics charge.
Okay.
That that doesn't really care prison time or penalty of the money is, you know, there are people in death row who didn't get a hundred thousand dollars worth of representation.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Org. Trustees, Rollings?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yeah.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes. Uh, resolution scheduling a public hearing in PLF twenty-two twenty-three, rescinding chapter one seventy-six of the village code, needs adding a new chapter. Easy quotes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, Paul Roll.
No, no, I.
Nora, you want to say something?
I do. Yeah, I'd love to. Um, land use application. Um, we've added, I guess we've added an appeal. This was not in the previous definition or an appeal. By an applicant to the zoning board of appeals from a determination of the building inspector. That's a new, that's new. We have not. Um, that's not in our code previously, although it's not bolded here. And I do not think we should, I think that we should not block. Residents from challenging an interpretation of a building inspector because an applicant has, you know, an.
Say it again?
So I, no, just say it again. I just. I don't think we should be blocking. Residents from challenging the interpretation of a building inspector because an applicant has a benefit.
Right, it's just making them kick over.
You're basically an applicant to who's asking for a permit. Gets a permit because they want to do something that improves their property. They're getting a benefit.
Mm-hmm.
A neighbor might. And there have been instances in which these things have been overturned. I don't think the neighbor who has no benefit other than a potential detriment to their property from somebody else's benefit.
Did we have an exception for for contiguous?
But it's not in there.
Oh. Well, you know, he- here's the thing. This is a service. The appeal is a service. Uh, you you should pay for your service. If you're not, you're 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 putting that cost on every other taxpayer in the village of America. And that's not fair. You know, we've had some of these that have cost tens, twenty thousand dollars.
We have, and we have had, and we have had some where the village went to court for, you know, a ton of money to defend. The residents who challenged a bad determination of the building inspector.
Okay.
So that's my point. My perspective is this should happen. You have a different perspective. We know how we're going to vote.
We we. Right, and we talked about this in work session, and you're bringing it up again. So I'm going to bring up my point again. You know, there there are a limited number of people who have ever done this. Uh, you know, and we all know who they are. And, you know, they've recently done one that wasn't even near. And, you know, it 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 it's like open season because it doesn't cost anything. And, you know, but it cost us to have lawyers. It cost the person who's, you know, that is building a permit there, you know, uh. Challenging, it cost that person a lot of money. Now, do we not care about that person?
Yes, what's in there?
But somehow the 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 board discussed this at its last meeting.
Yeah.
And added that provision regarding the applicants. Somehow what's on the agenda is the old version.
Okay, so 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 there is an exception.
What Nora is looking at is old.
Yeah, what's on the agenda is old.
So there is an exception for contiguous.
Based upon the board's discussion at its last meeting.
Yeah.
Was that there that. Uh, appellants. To the zoning board of appeals would be included among the people who have to pay the cost. Except that there would be a cap. Of a thousand dollars. On an appeal by someone who was within the notice area, the four hundred foot notice area, and therefore is presumably personally affected by it.
So i- if if you're next door and you want to challenge the. The determination.
Mm-hmm.
You, it actually shouldn't be the notice area because you you get a building permit without ever having been noticed.
Yeah, that's that's.
I I put in four hundred feet because that's sort of the standard notice. Okay, within four hundred feet. All right, so that.
So that that's fine, because at least for a thousand dollars, you have some skin in the game.
Right, you know, I mean, I the only thing I was worried about was 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 this this whole vigilante thing. People wandering around looking for stuff.
But that version isn't for you tonight. I'm sorry.
Okay, so then we we can't schedule the public hearing tonight.
Okay. All right, great.
That's fine. All I was looking for is that everybody has some skin in the game. And if you're, you know, if you're going forced town. Uh, to complain about somebody five miles away, you know, you should have to pay the full freight.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't stop them from doing it, right? That's will do it. Okay. Gotta write a check.
Thank you. Thank you for remembering.
Oh, there you go. I'm not I'm not completely confused.
Good night.
Resolution accepting donation of a bench in West Basin Hall, wrong, but. Uh, this is a a a friend of mine, actually. Uh, Sarah Sheen.
No.
Is is buying for her mom. Uh, they're longtime village residents.
You're saying that there's something.
There's one before town.
One before?
Yeah.
Put them out.
Uh, you, you're on page. Yeah. It's it's Danielle DeVanzio.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My boy. Uh, Danielle DeBanzio, uh, is is desiring of buying a bench in Harbrow and Park. Uh, which we appreciate, and she's doing it in loving memory of Michelle LaTerry and Biscuit.
Oh, biscuit.
I guess was her dog. Uh, and we thank her for the donation, two thousand two hundred forty-one dollars. Price of benches has gone up.
Okay.
It was eighteen hundred dollars a few years ago.
Everything's gone up, right?
Uh, I will make the motion.
Second.
Org. Trustees, Rollings?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, resolution acknowledging of a uniform court order.
No, no, then now this is the one from Sarah.
Why am I losing here?
It's behind the middle door.
It's like probably the flip side.
Oh, I see it. It should have been a different item.
Yeah.
We're as Mrs. Sarah Sheen is desiring to donating a bench to the village of Mariner. Uh, to replace in Harbrow in honor of Carolyn Fried Feldman, her mom, and Joseph Skip Feldman, her dad, from their children. And this is the same amount, and we'd like to thank the Sheen family.
Accounting.
And I will make the motion.
Second.
Call. Trustees, Rollings?
Yes.
Guys, you read? Young?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Uh, resolution acknowledgement of ordered justice court.
Uh, just the founder Davies ordered courts. Uh. Anything of note, Orgy?
That's just a requirement from the court system that it's presented to the board of trustees.
It's okay to make.
Make the motion.
So second.
Org. Trustees, Rollings?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh. Resolution authorizing road closures from Memorial Day Parade. Memorial Day Parade, Mariner Avenue, Prospect Avenue will be closed, including closure of Library Lane. Uh, that's on May twenty-eighth, Sunday, May twenty-eighth. And we meet at Mariner Avenue School, and we march down to the American Legion here. And the Legion always gives out hot dogs. And soft drinks to anyone who shows up, and I encourage you all to show up. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Paul. Trustees, Rollings?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, we talked about this inside of a work session last week, two weeks ago, supplemental appropriation to fund the purchase of police vehicles. Uh, Jerry, this is about the cost rising of police vehicles.
Correct, Mayor.
That we had ordered.
That we had ordered. That were canceled. We had to reorder because Ford canceled that. However, some of the responsibility is also on the vendor. And I gave a directive that we no longer use this vendor in the future, but we need these cars.
So Ford canceled the order and then.
So we're told.
And and then raise the price?
I'm not talking to Henry six, seven, or eight, no. So I don't know if they actually do.
Okay, uh. I need a motion. So moved.
Second.
Or please call it one.
Trustees, Rollings?
Yes.
Guys, you read?
Yeah.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
You know, we had a presentation from the fire department before, uh, to buy a engine. And the price of those have crept up to unbelievable.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the next up, resolution adopting capital budget and plan. Uh, this is a capital plan that we've been trying to adopt. Nigh on two years.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, nigh on three years. Yes. Uh, you know, this is planned for Mariner's future, uh, as I talked about in the work session. Uh, by the time a lot of these projects will be up to be enacted, or this will probably not be the board. That decides whether to enact them or not, because it's a ten-year plan, and there's a lot of big stuff on the horizon. But this is a good exercise in identifying the villagers' needs, identifying, uh, what, you know. Projects the community should be aware are on the horizon. And we are a very old community. We're one of the first suburbs. Uh, our sewer system or water system, portable water system, our facilities, as Manny pointed out, this facility here is in decrepit shape. And hopefully. This board and boards in the future will work to bring this community back into the twenty first century.
Thank you. We also plan to provide this plan to our rating agencies the next time we are under. Make sure we're they're aware of the fact that we are planning and that we are aware of everything that's coming down down the line.
Can I make a motion?
Second. Good.
Augustino. Trustee is Rollings.
Yes.
Guys are read. Young.
Yes.
Lucas.
Um, I I as I said in the work session, I have a couple of concerns. One, this is a capital. Um, plan, it's not a budget, there are no numbers tied to it. And we haven't tied it, we haven't backtracked to see how this is going to affect our operating budgets. And so. For the I I appreciate all the work the staff has done. I know that we have a lot to do. And we have made progress in identifying projects we need to do. But I think we need to really figure out how much this year and the next four years are going to cost us. And I think it has to be close more closely tied to numbers. So I'm saying no at this stage.
Okay, Murphy. Uh, I I appreciate staff's hard work on this. Uh, we have been trying to get this done for three years now. Uh, it every every time we had gotten near, it seemed the ball was moved and there was more information needed. And, you know, I I think what is important is that, you know, as a board, you need to take a. Twenty thousand feet view of the community. And we we don't need to pull every project apart to know what it's going to cost, because we have no idea what's. Project's going to cost in two or three years. So I'm going to vote yes. And that concludes the regular session. Mutation to the board round two.
They're all done.
And I think we've finished them off. It's just a.
Update from the village manager.
Uh, Mayor, um, deputy village manager Dan Sonoff has an update before I lose some time to update the board on the. Um, flood mitigation part.
Mr. Son.
Thank you. Um, around the same time that this board was meeting at your regular meeting on January twenty third. The Rochester County Board of Stateers was also meeting and approved. One million three hundred sixty five thousand four hundred twenty nine dollars and twenty four cents additional grant funding. For the Hillside Avenue Bridge. So that brings our total grant funding for the bridge to around five point three million dollars. Uh, and hopefully a very minimal charge event to the three municipalities.
I want to point out that I've spoke to a lot of people who were at that meeting. And that Mr. Sonoff. Uh. Had an excellent presentation. It was not a question he couldn't answer. Uh, and they had to vote yes because Dan had him down cold on everything. So Dan, I I want to thank you for that. And I and I heard that from legislators and I heard that from the town of Rise representative. And I appreciate everything you did.
Thank you. May I start backwards? It'll take just a few minutes.
Let's go backwards.
Yeah, I'll start backwards.
Okay.
I might talk backwards too.
Have you checked?
The, um. The Army Corps and the D C, as I mentioned earlier, um, did make a site visit last week to the the village of Mariner. Their review and visit all of the locations that were presented to, um. Uh, through them regarding our intention to dredge. Prior to that, we had a very successful meeting in New Falls. Uh, with the D C, Department of State, all of the legislators were there, their staff, as well as the Army Corps. So we have the approval under a maintenance agreement, what the D C calls a general permit. And the Army Corps, which has fifty seven different permits, but we're looking for a specific one. To dredge. The larger material that's in the Sheldon River from the town village line up to Mariner Avenue. The Hillside Avenue Bridge, North Barry Extension, roadway overpass. And preliminarily Beaver Swamp Brook. However, Beaver Swamp Brook. Um, when they looked at it last week, um, they're looking to tie in a culvert or an overpass. Um, to the provisions that are in the general permit. So. We have to do a little bit more work on that.
Sure.
The areas that they've told us that they do not want us to go into is of course the title area of the Beaver Swamp Brook.
That's near Ryne Neck.
Right, yeah, near, um.
Boston Post Road.
That's the so so now the so the Ryne Neck one is where they want to do it with the culvert?
Yeah, Ryne Neck one up near the high schools, okay. It's the one further down.
Near Shore Acres.
Boston Post Road, they don't want, they they don't want us. However, they did identify and they have asked us to work with the town. To eliminate the restriction, which I believe that I had presented to the board at some point, uh, when, um. Uh, ethics board member Maria DeRose had 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 me out there to take a look at that footbridge behind Continental View, which, um. The, um, both the Army Corps and the D C said is a significant choke point and needs to be widened or eliminated. So.
Raised. I mean, can they get rid of the whole foot? They're saying get rid of footbridge.
Yeah, but it it can be a different structure as long as it doesn't have that choke point, right, going through. So our team at our consultant team or coastal resource team, G E I. Um, they now have the studies that they've asked for from the Army Corps. They call it the Hecras, H E C, then R A S. With hydraulic models that the Army Corps formed during the, um, during the study portion of our current project. Um, they also learned from the state D C that their consultant, who they hired. Uh, for the New York Resiliency Study, uh, is providing the bathymetry and topography areas or topography study. Within two weeks now. It was three weeks, but that was a week ago. So within two weeks, we'll have a study that if, um. If we had to do it ourselves, would have cost us in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. So the state is really coming to the table. Uh, what we do need and what we have to, um, what we have to do with our consulting is create cross sections of all the proposed dredging areas. Uh, to make sure that the Army Corps and the D C are aware of exactly the extent that we have to, uh, that we want to dredge. One last thing on the Army Corps project, um, the Army Corps. Um, has shared with us that they will have a ninety degree, ninety percent design for the Ward Avenue Bridge completed on, um. In July of this year.
It's ahead of schedule, right?
It is ahead of schedule. Uh, the good news about the Ward Avenue Bridge is that currently, right now, it is, um. Forty five foot wide and sixteen foot deep. It will become eighty five foot wide and twenty foot deep. Um, it will eliminate Ward Avenue Park, which is a small neighborhood park, and it's a shame that we're losing it. But we're we're gaining a significant, a significant, um, flow. So. The Army Corps says that, um, it will reduce flooding on the Ward Avenue in the Ward Avenue area by six and a half feet.
Wow.
And the hydraulic opening currently is, um, six, six hundred and point two feet. And will go to fifteen hundred and seventeen feet. Um, so the Ward Avenue Bridge, once completed, will be able to accept two and a half on the volume that it currently accepts, right?
Wow.
So.
I don't know how we're gonna have the community.
Right. So I think they've spent many, many time, they have to start from the from the furthest point. And then move into the interior of the of the community. So. Ward Avenue Bridge, they will be here, uh, before July or at in July, present this with a ninety percent resign.
Do they know when construction will start?
No, they they don't know that. They haven't they haven't, if they know it, they haven't said haven't said anything. Uh, they will be, though, at the, um, at the Murphy Brothers Storage.
Wednesday.
February fifteenth at the, I think it's five, five fifteen, five P M.
Progress to address a private business group.
Private business group, yep. And the village engineer, myself, and the village building inspector will be. There, um, as well. We were invited to attend. And I think the board of trustees has also been invited at the at some. Such a good meeting, yeah.
March, but that's pub, that's noticed on our website.
Yeah, right, that that's a little better. That's my update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Can you, is it, do you think we should do this like every, at every meeting?
I can do it. I can do it once a month.
Yeah.
As long as I have new information. If I don't have new information, then.
Just say that, maybe.
Yeah.
I'll have it, yeah. Well, and if you do the Google document, that will help too. I just think that.
Yeah, you know, you're talking about the spreadsheet. If they do the spreadsheet, there'll be an update that I can provide on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh.
Can this, sorry, one more thing. Can this go in, um, the newsletter, um, this week's newsletter?
What's that?
What you just said.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Uh, report to the clerk treasure. Yes, ma'am. Rebel parking permit.
Whoa, whoa, but, um, just, uh, Dr. Get the, uh, uh, committee for the environment member.
Oh, thank you.
You know what? I it was there and then I zoned out.
Remind the John. We're gonna, we're gonna add that committee for the environment member.
I have it, okay.
I need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor of adding the item to the agenda?
All right.
Nora, would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to add, I forgot her name, though. I'd like to add, I gotta look this up. You have to find her resume. I'd like to add a member to the committee of the environment to the agenda. That's the. Motion. But do you?
No, we need a name.
I don't have, I'm trying to look it up.
We don't have the name of this person. Sally.
Mayor, I don't because I don't have the executive session backup. It wasn't on it.
Wasn't on it.
Yeah, mine either.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna add this person next week.
Yeah.
Good job. So no next time.
We we're all tired, it's late.
Uh.
We can stop.
Next up, uh, clerk treasure.
Yes, Mayor, uh, railroad parking permits are due to expire February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Renewal renewals will be mailed, uh, in the next week. Uh, new.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
New permits may be purchased in person or online beginning March first, twenty twenty three. The village will begin in a two week race period.
Uh, thank you. I got a question for you.
Yes, Mayor.
That's an important question about open meetings law. Maybe go to club cover reporters, um. The, uh, there was, there was, there was a meeting with the D C of New Falls.
Meeting you described earlier.
You described trustee Young accompanied the village manager. I was on Zoom. I made a statement at the beginning. Lonnie was on the phone, not on Zoom, never, never made a peep. Uh, just listened intently. Uh, there was. Social media chatter that we were violating the open meetings law. Were we violating the open meeting?
In my opinion, no.
Will you explain why we weren't violating?
I can give you, I could give you a full explanation based on the email that I sent to the board and to. Uh, the clerk treasurer, but the basic reason is that it was a D C meeting. That the the regional director of the D C convened the meeting, not a public body. Uh, as that term is defined in the open meetings law. And therefore it was not a public meeting that required. Uh, even though there were three members of the board present in one form or another.
Okay. And no decisions were made.
No decision made, because that's.
I mean, I was there advocating for this community.
That's right.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to clear that up. Uh, minutes boards committees, uh, minutes of a board of trustees work session and regular meeting of January twenty third. The special meeting of January thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Minutes at a board of architecture review meeting of December twenty second, twenty twenty. Minutes at the harbor and coastal zone management commission meeting, it's January tenth and January eighteenth, twenty twenty. Minutes at the planning board meeting of January twenty eighth and January eleventh, twenty twenty, June, I'm sorry, of July twenty eighth, twenty twenty. And January eleven, twenty twenty three. Minutes at a budget committee meeting of November first and December first, twenty twenty. Minutes at a recreation parks commission meeting of December seventh, twenty twenty. Minutes at a board of ethics, uh, meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Uh, tomorrow is Valentine's Day. Well, wish you all, uh, to celebrate. Yeah, happy Valentine's Day.
Your love, three hundred and sixty five days out of the year, not just that one day.
Some of us have obligations.
Sometimes.
For those of us who are obligated and who are enjoyed enjoying being obligated. Uh, I want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day and we will see you here again on February twenty seventh. The more village of America, water trust evening, right on this channel. I need a motion to close the meeting. So move.
Second.
Second.
Hi. On this channel.
You know, has the fine of the night, by the way.
Who else?
Well, you know, if the town needs L M C, we're gonna be called M T V. That would be great.
Only the name, not the rest of it, right?
Yes.
Things.
Like fish, you still smell the fish?
Yeah.
Where is it? It's like coming through the vents, I think.
It did smell, right? There was something like.
No, the smell that you were smelling is this.
It goes up for me.
Yeah. But I was smelled fish.